All right, welcome everybody to our Tuesday, August twentieth, twenty twenty four, regular city council meeting workshop at six P M. We'll go ahead and do a quick roll call for workshop and we'll take one again for the meeting. Councilmember Kurtz.
President.
Councilmember Ball. Here. Councilmember Spencer.
President.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
President.
All right, and I know Councilmember Van Norman is ill and Councilmember Cargill is out of town. He will be calling in later partway through our our regular council meeting. So if somebody could make a motion to excuse our two councilmembers.
So moved.
Right, do it a second.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Motion and a second to excuse councilmembers.
He's got it.
Van Norman and Mayor Protem. Bear with us for a moment while we get our audio in check here.
Everybody unmute at once.
Yeah.
See what it sounds like.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. All right. We are two councilmembers are excused. Our workshop discussion tonight is on debt management at the request of Councilmember Spencer. And I think City Administrator McAvoy and Finance Inspector Kyle Dixon will be leading the discussion tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. And as you mentioned, Kyle and I are gonna collaborate on this one. And so we've got a very short, what I'll call presentation, and then we want to make sure to offer ample time to open the floor up for Q and A. In the previous discussion, we had started that off with a brief discussion about whether, what kind of treatment possibly would be appropriate for some kind of action that council may want to take? And before we dive into this, I want to make sure that we're comfortable with the responses. And if we need to follow anything up, and I'm relying here on the city attorney to guide this part of the conversation with respect to considering an ordinance and whether or not that is something that within the comparison and contrasting of various RCWs would be something that we would even entertain. And then, once we have a clear understanding of that, we can dive into the debt management portion, reviewing specifically the financial policies that relate to debt management specifically. And so Sean, if you've got any updates there, any guidance that you'd like to provide before we jump into that conversation, we would welcome it.
Yeah, just real brief. I think it's just was my concern, and I've been able to look at the statutes and there isn't potential constitutional issues on the Washington State Constitution relative to that aspect. So I think if there was an ordinance passed to do something would be potentially challenged and be problematic. And so, you know, my recommendation would be, you know, whether that's in the financial policies, which I think they are now. I think Kyle has indicated, at least to me anyway. Or some other fashion that the council would want to take outside of an ordinance.
Any questions on that before we move forward? Okay, and so the remaining portion of our discussion tonight is centered on the city's current financial policies. There is a section in the financial policies and you all have an excerpt of it. It is section fifteen hundred and it's entitled Debt Management. And so that's the section from which we're going to be presenting tonight and centering the conversation around tonight. And so I will start and then at some point Kyle is going to present some information about our current debt obligations, and then we will open it up for council discussion. Evan, if we can go to the next slide, please. So I wanted to point out that the current financial policies, which do include the debt management chapter, state that at a minimum, the policy and the city's post issuance compliance policy, which is a policy within the chapter of debt management, will be reviewed and updated every five years. And so as part of the last review and update of the financial policies, which occurred on February seventh, twenty twenty three, we believe we're in full compliance with that provision in section fifteen hundred. And obviously, it's council's prerogative to update these whenever it so chooses. But with respect to the guidance in the policy, we're about a year and a half from the last review and update, just as a matter of kind of level setting here on timeline. If we could go to the next one, Evan. And so from a legal compliance perspective, the policy itself states throughout that we are required, the city is required to follow all federal, state and local laws, including the Constitution as it relates to its debt management. And it specifically calls out in the policy, in the text of the policy, all IRS, SEC and Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board rules and regulations, and it cites some specific ones that are there for you to see, Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty six, Security Act of thirty-three, thirty-four, as you can see there. And then also, it's got several mentions or references to various sections of the Revised Code of Washington, including the Refunding Bond Act, the Public Disclosures Act, and the Ethics and Public Service Act. In addition to that, when you get into some of the subsections, for example, post issuance or communications, it also specifically reinforces the city's obligation to follow all federal, state and local laws that may be applicable to those things that you're undertaking in those sections. And so from a legal compliance perspective, we believe that our policy complies with all federal, state, local laws. Evan, next slide, please. If you switch focus and start looking at best practice, which is within the legal framework, or I should say, it's a different focus, but it's assuming that you're legally compliant. We would rely on the Government Finance Officers Association to kind of set the framework of best practice for debt management. And when you look at their main categories of best practice, you can see them there, use of advisors, techniques, debt issuance, disclosure, debt management, and post issuance. There are within those major categories, multiple subcategories. And so I'm not going to go through each of those, but I just want council to feel confident that from a best practice perspective, we meet all of the best practice standards that have been established by the GFOA. There are things that they consider best practice that we do not do because we don't need to do them. But with respect to the things that we have in our debt management policy, all of those things are what the GFOA would consider best practice. And for the most part, I would say ninety percent of their defined best practices, we are, we meet those. We specifically have language in our debt management policy that complies or comports with GFOA best practice. Before we move on, are there any questions about the legal compliance aspect of the policy or the best practiced aspect of the policy? Okay, so with that, we're gonna look at some actual numbers. And if we can go to the next slide, I'm going to turn the floor over to Kyle. These are a little hard to see because they're big numbers. But we'll, we'll talk you through them. And Kyle.
Thanks, Mark. So yeah, this is an outline of our statutory capacity as set by RCW, and we can kind of take you by by column here. And so our debt limit essentially is set by our assessed value within the city limits. And so you can see each year what our taxable property, the assessed value is of each of those years. And then within that, you have a category limit allowed by law of general debt, utility debt, and open space and parks facilities. The City Liberty Lake doesn't essentially operate their own utilities. We do have stormwater facilities. There's a potential down the road that we might implement different utilities, but you have these three subsets of debt categories that also make up your total debt permitted by law. And so you can see, we have a pretty staggering number that is allowed by law that we would hope to never ever come close to. So as you can see, twenty twenty-three, exactly. We, we can take out a note for two hundred and twenty-eight million. Well, actually, no, two hundred and twenty-two, but anyways. But so this gives you kind of a snapshot of what is allowed by RCW, and it is ridiculous. I think we can all agree on that. But within the framework of our assessed value and what is allowed, this is just kind of a snapshot of we've issued two points, two point five percent of our allowed, and we have obviously ninety-seven point five percent of capacity left. So this is just a it's a visual of what is allowed by law. Obviously, not that we would ever take it to that, but just, just some information in our financial policy that you may not have known that's also RCW. So next slide, please. And so I just wanted to talk a little bit about debt as an instrument as well. And debt is a four-letter word. I think we all are kind of, we know that debt has a negative connotation with good, with good reason. And so debt in the context of local government and its uses has the ability to be a very constructive instrument, though. And so any debt that is ever issued is approved by city council first. Debt has the ability to lessen the burden of costs of infrastructure over time. So you do have an increased equity in what your ratepayers are paying. So you don't have one snapshot of time, those ratepayers paying for everything. So you do spread that cost of infrastructure over time. And there are several state agencies that do these loan grant combos that are incredibly beneficial. Public Works Board, formerly Public Works Trust Fund, right now there are interest rates for non-distress communities. If you can get approval for infrastructure, it's point six eight percent. And you could potentially attach some grants onto the back of that. Ecology has some loan grant combos. USD ARD has some, we have historically scored poorly because we are a non-distress community, and those funds are very competitive. But we will always keep our eye on what's out there. And we're gonna have a procurement specialist onboard next month, and one of their core functions is going to be seeking out these opportunities. And so really, I think that's all we had. Next slide, please, Evan. And so I think we just wanted to open it up to council to field any questions and discussion and go from there.
Real quick, Kyle, before we jump in, just to expand on the comment you were making, using Trailhead as the example, since it's what we have right now, you know, by doing the twenty-year, we're spreading, it's not the people who are living here just today who are paying for it. It's, you know, our community turns over. So the benefit of that is that the people who come and go through our community pay for it as the years go by, instead of burdening just the people who live here today paying for the whole thing.
And hopefully, you've all had an opportunity to read through this section in advance of the meeting, because it talks about all of those principles being incorporated into the policy, right? The not using debt to pay current operating expenditures, not using debt outside of the useful life of the asset. Those kinds of principles are infused throughout the policy. And so that, that's something that's important when you go to looking at the strategies for using an instrument that, as the table has shown, we've not relied on, but it's there if we need it, and it's a useful instrument if we need to deploy it.
Okay. For questions.
Just as observation, I reflect, Mayor Chris, on the the utility, the assets that we have distributed over the people who will live here in the future. The lifecycle of what we have as city assets spend well beyond what might be our own physical presence in this community. So debt as an instrument for the city to serve its purpose really allows and enables that.
Since there's only five here, so I'm just gonna kind of let you guys pop in when you want, instead of me calling on each of you, so.
And so just to queue it up, as you can see, our recommendation is not to change, and we're specifically talking tonight about section fifteen hundred of the financial policies, which is debt management chapter. But we're recommending not to change anything in that chapter, but we want to hear council's comments and certainly answer any questions and hear the dialogue.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Well, for many years, you know, we had debt with the Trailhead, and then we're able to get that paid off, and it's great to be debt-free. And then I can remember from the council standpoint, it started having a lot of discussion is that debt was good in some way because it shows that we can pay our debt, and it opens up the possibility, we want to do that in the future. I'm comfortable with that aspect. I think, I think the real question for me comes down to that you look at, we could borrow two hundred and something million dollars, of which, can I get my phone working? So I would like to make a motion. So that becomes very obvious. But I think the real question is, what do we feel that's we're comfortable with? You know, one, I'm completely comfortable with zero debt. You know, we're a fast-growing city. I think we're still number ten without, within the state. You know, with the new businesses coming onboard and more that will come onboard, we're gonna be in a pretty good tax situation, but eventually we all know that will come to an end. So for me, it's always a matter of trying to figure out if we're gonna have some debt, can it be paid off long in advance before we run out of land and run out of development and run out of housing? So I think the real question for me comes down to, what is the council comfortable if we're going to have debt? Ideal, no debt, but some debt. What are we gonna live with?
Councilmember Kurtz. Well, and I think, Councilmember Kennedy, I think that you're speaking along lines that I'm comfortable with, too. I think that ideally, we would have no debt, but I'm also hearing that that's good. So maybe a little bit, but I think some of it comes down to what the council now is willing to do, also what the council in the future is willing to do based on the changing conditions of the city, the changing needs of the city, and the changing wishes of the community. So I like the idea of us being able to respond to that as it comes forward. To be able to meet the need and meet the business need of the city and the service standards that we put forward, so.
I'll hop in. So I think, and I've made it very clear that I don't think, at least at this point in time, the city needs to entertain any additional long-term debt. I would propose looking at the policy here as I read through it in the section under the following debt guidelines are established. That's on page six of the packet here. Sec, or number, number five and six, the city will not use long-term debt to pay for current operations. Of course, I agree with that. And then going from there, the use of bonds or certificates of participation will only be considered, I would propose that we add considered for emergency significant capital and infrastructure improvements. And, and we could combine five and six touching on that. So, so essentially, it would, it would be looking at if we're, if we run into some sort of emergency, we have an earthquake or something, and we've got to repair some major infrastructure or some buildings. Obviously, we would need to entertain some, some sort of option there if we didn't have the cash available. But I mean, as far as the, the argument that debt is good and can be used as a tool, I mean, if Dave Ramsey were here, he would just be chuckling because that's nonsense. We can spread out the cost of these capital improvements across us going forward through the taxes that are being paid. A trailhead was already being paid into if there had been a cookie jar put, set aside for the replacement of that building twenty years ago, we wouldn't have had to go into debt for that project either. And all of the residents at that time and moving forward from that twenty years forward would have all been financing that, that project. So I would propose that, that we wordsmith that five and six and and commit ourselves as a council to say, there's really no good, good reason to be using long-term debt at this point in time. If a few, you know, future council, if they decide we want to change it, well, it's just as easy as what we're doing today.
Um, go ahead. Questions? Okay, so a couple of questions. Kyle, so is this policy section fifteen hundred, is this ours specifically? Okay.
Yeah.
And then the other question I had, you, you, Councilmember Kennedy, didn't you say Trailhead's paid off? It's not, is I?
Before. It was paid off.
At one point.
The property itself.
Oh, oh, that was a private loan.
The actual real estate, the property. Okay, okay. Okay. And then I have another question for you, Kyle. On the very first part, it says transfer of assets between governmental funds. I just want to be clear, is that like a bridge loan? Is that, that's what I kind of excited it to?
So it differs between whether it is a loan or for an operating cost. And so if you have a transfer of assets between funds, you identify the parameters of that transfer prior. And so what you have is you have an interfund transfer. For example, we transfer normally two hundred thousand dollars from the Streets Fund to the Streets Capital Fund just for purposes. And that's, that's kind of a, that's a savings fund that we use. There's also interfund loans. And so we did that ten years ago. We had our Fund Three Twenty, our Harvard Load, Harvard Road Mitigation Fund loan, or, oh, otherwise, we had our general fund loan, Harvard Road Mitigation, six hundred and ten thousand dollars for the construction of the, of the Harvard Roundabout. And so that was for a designated purpose, and then that fund then paid back to general fund. And so.
All right, you're stand, thank you.
I think for me, before we go around again, the most, the most important thing on that page six is number one, city council approval is required prior to the issuance of debt. Debt has to be approved by which, whatever's sitting around this dais. And then if, if, if it's going to affect property taxes, it needs to go to the citizens. So I don't, in my mind, there's, you know, that's really the bottom line. That's what, that leaves the decision to every future council, no matter who's sitting here. Instead of, instead of, again, it's not by ordinance tying their hands, but to put a policy in to say, you know, no debt. You know, to then have, have the council have to go through that extra step to go through and change the financial policy again in order for them to get there, when it's clearly managed by the council, no matter whoever's sitting there at the time.
I'll just say from, from my standpoint, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with the fact that, that the council would have to take those extra steps because I think we're accountable to the voters and we're spending their money. And regardless of whether we're, you know, gonna be getting some sweet program through a grant, I mean, all that money is coming from the taxpayers, one way or another. So I'm okay with, you know, us having to take action as a council, even, even if it were this same council in one or two years, having to say, oh, gosh, we made a big mistake. But honestly, I believe that if we limit it to emergency situations only, we're setting the precedent that we are responsible to the taxpayers, we're taxpayers ourselves, and there just really isn't a good case for, for going into debt, long-term debt.
Councilmember Ball. Then who decides if it's an emergency? I mean, one person's emergency might be another person's, yeah, it's an issue, but not an emergency, you know, unless it's like you said, massive earthquake or something.
Define emergency.
Yeah.
Councilmember Kurtz. Well, I have a question then, because I think that if we talk about the library, which should potentially be another coming up place where we would need to look at how we're gonna pay for that, right? A couple of years ago, there was the ask to add a cookie jar, like you said, of a hundred thousand dollars a year to the budget to start saving up for the library, and I don't think that we did that. So as we're coming up now in a situation where we've bought a building, feels like we're fairly committed to bringing in a library because the, we did a needs assessment, the community is, is in need of that. Then how would we fund the library if we've, if we've done this? And we haven't started saving, which was a council decision a couple of years ago. So I think in that type of a situation, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to fund the library. And that's the kind of responsiveness that I'm wanting to make sure that we preserve is the ability to do that. And the ability to be very critical and conscientious about how we would fund that and what we need based on, you know, whatever the project design that we're gonna get, hopefully sometime soon comes out to be, but that's a concrete example of a way where I think we would get in our own way of being able to move forward on a project that we've already committed funding to.
That's where we're done.
I like that the library is a perfect example of an asset, a significant asset for the community that will go on for twenty years or greater. We plan for that in the life of the assets of the city. So I would want for that, the citizens of the community at that future time to also contribute to making that happen for us.
Again, going, going from a standpoint, and this is why I was against moving forward with a project manager without setting a budget, because right now it appears to me that there may be an appetite for that blank check. And well, what is this, what does the community want through this survey? To me, we're, we're going backwards. We're, we're, we're putting the cart before the horse in, in, in terms of how we're gonna fund this. Yes, we had an opportunity to come up to buy the building, and we took that opportunity. At the time, it was understood that to bring it up to code, it was gonna cost significantly less. Now we're looking at two million. And we may possibly have the opportunity to get a two million dollar grant, matching grant. In my mind, the moment we receive that grant is what, when we start making decisions about what we're gonna do with the library because of the fact that it's gonna take that amount of money just to bring it up to code, and that's not even gonna get us a library. So it, it's, it's not a situation that we had planned for to save up and buy the library. We have the funds through the ARPA funds, and so we took that opportunity, but now we find ourselves in a situation where the costs to bring it up to code are gonna be significantly more. And from a, from a planning standpoint, I feel like we don't have enough information to even move forward, let alone you know, talk to the community about what they want, because of course, they're gonna, if we, if we show them, you know, the Corvette, they're gonna want the Corvette. Not realizing that they're, you know, if we do end up funding it through debt, that they are passing that debt on to a future generation.
Well, just, just real quick, I don't think anybody's mentioned putting, going into debt for the library. We, we've got but, well, I mean, just in the past, we've got different funds that is that we can pull from for that, right? Because you do that. And we, and we do have the presentation coming, the second meeting in September for the estimates. Go ahead, Councilmember Curtis.
To be clear, I'm, I'm not in favor of a blank check, like, just putting that out there, that, that we are gonna have conversations about this coming up. About what we're comfortable with, what the need is, and we'll make those decisions together.
Yeah.
Thank you, Eric. I will always, always support zero debt. I mean, it's just, it's just the businessman in me to not do that, not spend our future now. Even with the city, even as flush as we are, the thing I caution us on as we move forward, and specifically a good example is a library, is that the two million dollars we paid for that didn't come out of our budget. That was COVID money, but that was unexpected, and that was a real blessing. COVID helped us out there to be able to buy that building, be able to move forward. But I think what's important as we start looking at the library, can we do that without going into, but, excuse me, debt? But also at the same time, I think we need to be looking at equally the same exact time. What do we do about this building? What do we do about, we're a hundred employees, we've outgrown this building? What do we do with the remaining space that we have where the library will move from? How we incorporate that, and how much money will that take? You know, we talked periodically of expanding this out here to get us another four hundred square feet. So I think it's important for our vision that we include those at the same time, because if not, if we just focus on the library, and then suddenly, well, gee, now the buildings come up, we have more debt. Well, we should have talked about that then. Let's talk about that now. So we can move forward and look at possibly, we can do the library without going into debt, but also look at if it's gonna take debt to do something with this building or move somewhere else, which I think is critical. I really do believe it's critical for us moving forward that we're taking our employees and we're cramming them into this space that was originally built for us Alheimers facility, and we've outgrown it, and I think we need to look at the same time of what we're gonna do with that.
We're having some internal discussions already on that, because our, our facility's master plan is, is scheduled to start kicking off, and that's one thing you'll, you guys will finally meet Ben in person, our new Public Works Director, and that's one of the things he'll be taking charge of. And so that, those discussions will start happening, and it will encompass all of the city facilities, including, you know, in towns, we still have the Town Square Master Plan, and that'll, that's all part of the whole citywide facility plan. So you will start hearing more about that soon. Councilmember Kurtz.
And on that note, I think that as we're heading into budget season two, that I'd be more than happy to, you know, look at putting aside something for those capital facilities projects if we, in addition to maybe what we already have out there, because I think understanding what we already have set aside for some of those is important, too. But if we need to be setting aside some funds now so that we can pay for whatever it is that we're gonna be doing, then I, I agree with Councilmember Spencer about trying to be able to do that and be intentional about it.
So it is possible then, like, to create these little cookie jars, right, for different projects?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. So back to the library, we don't have to give them the Corvette, you know, we can give them a Volkswagen, you know, I mean, the, 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 what is he, what do you call it? The survey's out there, and I doubt people are gonna be asking for things that are unreasonable or, you know, ir- That what is he, what do you call the surveys out there? And I doubt people are going to be asking for things that are unreasonable or, you know, irrationally expensive. Um, and if we can't do it, we can't do it. You know, um, it just, it's it's a library. It doesn't need to be extravagant. So um, and and I I really do disagree about the cart before the horse thing, because without a plan, how can you have a budget? That doesn't make sense to you. You have to have some kind of an idea of what's going into the facility and then what's it going to cost?
And that's what we'll we'll you'll be seeing.
Yeah. And so, yeah, I mean, oh, well, the gold plated toilet's not going to work, so we get rid of it, you know, I'm being facetious, but you get the point. Think we're doing it right.
Council of all of all very, very good comments. I I I do want to point out, though, that our history with projects. Rarely comes in what we think it's going to cost. Okay, we've generally been over it. We've we've sometimes been under it, sometimes been level with it. But I know with the uh, uh, Trailhead, uh, this council spent hours and hours and hours of meetings. You think you've had meetings now? Forget it. We had hours of meetings figuring out what that budget was going to be for whatever it was going to be. And we determined it was six point two million dollars and not a nickel more. We're close to two million dollars over granted, some of it's for inflation. And but we got a really nice facility. So I think what we have to be cautionary about moving ahead with the library. Moving ahead with City Hall and things of sort here is that we tend to, once we start. Somebody says, but well, with that fine, for a little more, we get this. A little more, we get this, a little more, we get this. Suddenly we have power windows, we have cruise control, everything like that. And it it just creates a challenge.
Well, and and you can, if you look back to, and I don't remember if you were here yet. Um, you know, we also have started in the past, you know, when we had the community center, aquatic center, I won't even say pool, because it was. It was an aquatic center. And, you know, we started. High in the sky when, you know, I'm saying that, well, okay, mission pool stays busy all the time. There are rectangle with a baby pool in the deep end. You know, and so I think we need to keep those things in mind when we're doing things like the library, the facilities master plan. What will serve the purpose? What is required? And then if there's some extra money to add some bells and whistles, you know, that that's something the 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 community to weigh in on. But we, you know, okay, what's going to serve the purpose? You know, what's going to get us from A to B um, in and somewhat in the future? So, yeah, we definitely don't want to start over designing like that. That was when we started.
And uh, Councilmember Kennedy, I just want to make it clear, I do not like debt either. I freak out when I have to use my credit card. So, but. Okay, anyway, thank you.
Oh, I I was just going to say too, that I think as we're looking at doing some of these things, we don't have to build the whole thing all at once either. Things can be added on to. Um, things can be improved upon. I think that we can also do a better job perhaps of um, public private partnerships. And um, getting investors and people who are in the community that support and want to make contributions to the city. Um, I think there's different ways. I again, I don't think that government has to pay for everything. I think there are ways to um. To work together for the whole community, so.
Well, you know, obviously, we've kind of gotten off a little off track. We're here to talk about, you know, what's the debt policy? All great discussion.
Well, and to be frank, I mean, that that's the reason why uh, I had the urgency anyway to talk talk about this topic. Because I want it to be at the top of our minds as far as how how are we proceeding, whether we decide to change the policy or not. You know, when we heard the first time that it was going to be two million dollars to uh, bring the building up to code. And and I believe the term they used was the design build. Was going to be a minimum of four million dollars. I believe that was the number they threw out.
Progressive design builders.
Progressive, uh, right, progressive design build build. So with that being said, we know we've got a minimum of four million dollars if we're going with that option. Not knowing whether we're going to get the two million dollar grant is a pretty big, pretty big swing, right? Um, so so again, just looking at the numbers and saying, well, first of all, Kyle, you know, we need to have a conversation. Do can we even afford four million? Can we afford two million? We're going to be in at least two million, even if we get the grant, can we afford that? Where are we going to take those funds? That's that's what I had hoped would have been the conversation prior to engaging a um, project manager. Uh, again, I gave the example of, you know, if you're planning a family vacation. You're probably going to set some sort of budget and then contact the travel agent rather than the other way around. Uh, because the travel agent's going to come back with a bunch of cool options. The kids see it, they're like, oh, gosh, it's like a trip of a lifetime, Dad, come on. And then you're going to pull out the credit card. I'm just talking, practically speaking, that's essentially. Uh, what I foresee happening in a situation like this, if we don't all kind of have level heads and say. What i- is it important to to have debt? Do we even have the funds available? I don't know, because we haven't looked at it yet.
Uh, thank you. I I appreciate the mayor pointing out what the this meeting was called for, but I also think our conversation is really, really good. I I think we're really getting in into the 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 thick of it. Uh, speaking of the library, because I have come up on it, uh, and he's correct that, you know, we maybe we don't have to build everything out at the same time. We talked about that at Trailhead and that went by the wayside, but at least we talked about it, the option, you know, that was there. Um, also, I feel with the debt and what it's going to cost. I kind of think the library is on a fast track. I look at the schedule. And to be honest with you, I don't see the urgency of that. If we've applied for a two million dollar grant. And Councilman Spencer has said, I think that's critical on how we can move forward. I have to agree with that. And there's a timeframe when that might come in, because that will determine how much money we're going to spend. We have a library now where they they are functioning, functioning well. The expansion is going to be outstanding, there's no question about that. But I certainly don't see that we have to be on a fast track that by first of the year or middle of the year of next year. That we've moved into that. I think that we can take our time, get hard numbers like we did on Trailhead. Uh, to see exactly what it's going to cost, what we can afford, and how I'm going to pay for it. Thank you.
And that's really the the path we're going down. You know, the 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 team will bring back three options, I believe it is, at the September seventeenth meeting, kind of like we started out with Trailhead. To try to narrow down, okay, well, or you do you want the Cadillac? Do you want the Pinto? Or do you want something in between? Um, and then, you know, go from there. And then there there, uh, like we went through with with Trailhead, well, you know, okay, do we want? Want to, you know, to do a banquet room for eighty, or do we want to do it for a hundred? We want the deck to be sixteen feet wide or ten feet wide. There were those decisions along the way, which I expect, I fully expect with the library. Um, and of course, you know, they're not. Um, church isn't moving out till at the end of April, beginning of May.
April twenty twenty five.
Yeah, so and and I believe, and obviously tonight's agenda, you have the uh, the letter for uh, for you guys to approve. Supporting um, at the grant request and that decision from Commerce, I believe, is still due in September, correct, Mark?
Middle of September, yes.
Yeah, so we should have at least the initial feedback by then. And then it's it's a matter of lobbying. Um, the legislature on getting getting that approved. So I guess, you know, are there next steps? I know Councilmember Spencer, you know, had, you know, put his request out there, but I didn't. Didn't seem like I heard from anybody else support for making that change, but I might be reading the room wrong.
I support the staff's recommendations that there's no changes needed to the finance policy.
Was that a motion?
No, just just a general statement.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I I I feel the same way. No need to change it.
Councilmember Kennedy.
I favor it. I just don't know how we would do it. That's the challenge. You know, we put the effort into it, and then we're challenged, or you know, we have to. We we might have to change our mind in six months or ninety days when uh, the library budget comes in and what's going to happen there on it. Um, I'm really pleased that the subject came forward. I think we've really got some headway in this meeting. So I appreciate Councilman Spencer bringing it forward. Thank you.
Well, and just to be clear, I I'm not suggesting we go through the ordinance route uh, based on the the information we got.
Understood. Well, and there's going to, Kyle's got some additional um, updates to the financial policy that he'll have before you guys later on. In the year when we typically look at these things. Um, so there there's, you know, opportunity for further discussion if it comes, if it comes back up to that point. Because we usually go through the personnel manual and the finance policy usually has changes every year. So go ahead, Councilor.
So did you say the legacy is moving out twenty twenty five, April?
So their their lease expires April thirty at twenty twenty five.
Right, but they haven't even started their new building, so it's not inconceivable. They'll still want to be in there. You know?
God moves in mysterious ways.
Well, well, and that would be extra income and more time to figure things out if we haven't figured it out already.
Fortunately, I'm not on the executive board for that. I do, I I am a a member, but I'm not privy to those back doors.
I haven't seen a shovel move yet, so it's going to take time. Well, there's a flag.
They're doing, they're doing, they're doing worship service out there next Sunday. If you guys want to hear hear some good music, maybe they'll have some updates.
Outdoors?
Yeah. Church outdoors, uh, two two Sundays ago, they had their service at Pavilion Park. All right, well, if you guys don't have any other questions, we can um, adjourn until we start back at seven. All right, we are, we'll adjourn till we get back here at seven. Thanks, everybody.
Okay, welcome, everybody. Today is Tuesday, August, I have to look, twentieth, twenty twenty four. Welcome to our regular city council meeting. Um, with us tonight, uh, we've got uh, most of the council will run through a roll call. We have several of our um, our uh. Staff here in person and online. So we will go ahead and start off with the invocation. Councilor Dunn, can I put you on the spot, which I do tonight, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please join us.
Father in heaven. We're grateful to come together as a community to speak and to listen about the place we call home. Inspiring us imagination and wisdom to listen carefully. In your son's name, amen.
Go ahead and call the meeting to order at seven oh one. We will jump into the roll call. Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Ball.
Here.
Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Present.
Hi, and we know uh, Councilmember Van Norman is out ill and Councilmember Cargill is traveling. We'll try to call in a little bit later in the meeting. But for now, do we have a motion to excuse the two of them?
Move to excuse Mayor Pro Tim Cargill and Councilmember Van.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Councilmember Ball. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Right, motion passes, our council, our members are excused. Uh, we are on agenda approval, just so you know, I have asked Councilmember Dunn to help us with uh, moving the meeting forward tonight.
Uh, Madam Mayor, uh, I move to remove item nineteen on our agenda tonight, executive session. Uh, there will be no executive session called for in tonight's meeting.
Correct, and they'll be, well, we are basically trying to move that to the next, the next meeting, so. We have a motion of second. Um, all in favor of removing item nineteen from our agenda, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, we have removed that. Now, do we have any other changes or but before we move on? Nope, go ahead.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I move the agenda as amended.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
For a second by Councilmember Kennedy. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Got to get used to saying that tonight, the five. All right, um, we are up to citizen comment. We get there quickly. So we do have, if we do have a couple of these filled out. So if you are in the audience physically here, we have these yellow half sheets by the door over here. You can fill one out and um, give it to Kelsey at the end of the table there. She's our city clerk. We'll get these to me. Um, he's, you have already have on here, just make sure you you note whether or not you live in the city limits or not. Um, if you are online and would like to make a citizen comment, please send a note to our meeting host. And he will get my attention when that time comes. Uh, general guidelines for our our comments, there's a three minute limit. Uh, I will ask if you are speaking on any of the um. Or uh, where where are we? The public hearings with regards to the two code amendments, we will ask you to hold comments on those until those public hearings. Um, we generally don't don't do that, but since that that would be the more appropriate time. Three minute limit, any topic besides those, we just ask you to keep your comments respectful. Um, this is truly a citizen comment time. This is your turn to speak to us for us to listen. Um, we typically don't get into a back and forth, but if there's something we can get back to you on, or we'll make sure. Um, we have all of your contact information and we will have staff follow up if that's required. So with all of those rules in front of us, uh, we go ahead and take these. We have Lisa Willockson. Please join us. And you'll see the timer pop up on the screen. Should be on. Should be, should be green. Tom's going to check it for you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilwoman. I really appreciate your time, so thank you very much. I'm live within the city limits in the development, basically overlooking Meadowwood called Bellalago. You go up Valley Way and then it turns into Lakeside. There is an additional section on Bellalago that is being proposed to be purchased by a developer. And we have concerns about the safety and basically the infrastructure. A quick background, I grew up in Southern California, lost our home three times to wildfires. I was on the edge of a state park. And so I know very real the paradise situations, the Maui situations. And how quickly they grow and people have to evacuate. And I've seen the cars get backed up and people not get in. And in particular, where I was in Topanga Canyon, they closed the canyon and children were left behind. Because we were out of school, parents couldn't get back in the canyon, and we were trying to get ourselves out. Um, so my main concern is not trying to stop growth within Liberty Lake. But just make sure that we've set up the infrastructure to make sure that we ha- keep our safe community. And my reason in particular up where that area is, is because we have the state park that has camping. We have the off-road vehicle park, we have the horse area where they bring in horse trailers. We have Meadowwood Golf Course, we have the Zephyr Lodge Event Center. And we've already had other homes and, you know, one development that recently is going in was that area was zoned for five homes. And the developer got it changed for eleven homes. That was in the county, so that wasn't in your jurisdiction. But there is a lot of traffic. If you had a Saturday afternoon with events at all of those. And Zephyr Lodge is starting to have large music concerts, and you had a fire break out quickly in that state park. We would not be able to get all the cars down the two lane narrow road of Lakeside. And at the same time, have fire crews trying to come up the road. And so we are looking at a large disaster, and I just have asking that before we think of approving more development. That we think about changing our road to what's called a three lane roads. You have that center lane for turning. But a lot of it so that you have some bandwidth in emergencies and that cars can merge on. Because they're also merging on to the two lane road on Multer. Um, so I haven't gotten to a lot of the points, but that was my big thing. I know I'm going to run out of time. Um, that I just really want you to consider as the developer talks to you and talks about that. That we really need to think about the safety, because we have a real um, congestion area possibilities. With all those large event centers, along with all the homes that are already there. And I just would hate to see. Um, us become a paradise. So thank you very much for your time.
Too. And um, just know that anybody can always also send in a comment to our city clerk. Many characters as you'd like, uh, and she uh, will pass that on to staff and to council. So if there's additional points anybody would like to make, uh, feel free to do that.
Thank you.
So next up, we have Jerry Katz.
Good evening. Thank you all for your time and and all you do for the city. Um, I'm I'm also a neighbor of Bellalago of leases. And um, aside from the concern um, of uh, transportation, getting fire emergency vehicles. Up and down Lakeside, which is, as you know, a very narrow approach. Our concern is with the dozens of homes that are above us that travel by our back door every day. Um, the 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 possibility of a disaster occurring, and how do we all get out? Our concern is possibly not even being able to pull out of Bellalago on the lakeside. Just because of the tremendous amount of traffic in an emergency situation. Um, we we've met as a, as the homeowners association have met a few times with this new developer. Um, I'm not quite sure how far that's gone along. Uh, I know that they apparently have closed escrow on it. So the process will all start, and maybe uh, the first question should be possibly talking to the building department, what they're approving. So uh, that's that's probably next on my list. But I think the biggest concern, uh, not necessarily trying to stop development. But as it stands now, um, Bellalago is a single entrance and exit. That's the only way out in an emergency. And other developments that are down the road have a similar situation. Um, having limited access for fire and emergency. Um, having limited access for fire and emergency vehicles and us as homeowners trying to evacuate. It just looks like a potential problem. So, um, we'll take that up with the building department to see what their regulations are. Um, your input, your consideration is certainly appreciated.
Right, thank you. And, um, our planning engineering director and our public works director are in attendance tonight. As well. So, what, can you, before you leave, can I pass these back and you guys, um, provide your phone numbers or another piece, way to contact? While you're doing that, I will see if we have anybody online who'd like to make a comment. We don't have any. Is there anybody else here in chambers who would like to make a comment except on our zone, our zoning proposals? Okay, so we will go ahead and move on to announcements. Yes. Oh, okay.
We had one, um, written public comment that was received from Richard Seiler regarding the intersection of Appleway and Country Vista that was forwarded to council.
Right, thank you. I broke my promise. I said I wouldn't forget you. I'm sorry. Um, we, uh, item seven, we do not have any announcements, proclamations, or special presentations tonight, which brings us to reports and inquiries, starting with city council. Are these city council reports? Councilmember Dunn.
Uh, just as an STA update, the, uh, search for a CEO replacing Susan E. Meyer will be, uh, is ongoing. There were no board meetings related to the STA during the month, but there's a, um, board operations committee meeting uh, weekly to work with recruiting agents to support the transition. So, um, work on coming.
Great, thank you. Any other council reports? All right, not hearing any. Uh, I'll try to make mine short. Uh, my brain's a little fried this last couple of weeks, stuff going on personally. Uh, but I will note that, um, Councilmember Ball and I were, um, had the honor of, of attending the one hundredth anniversary celebration for the hundred and forty first refueling wing at Fairchild, which is an Air National Guard, um, group. Much to both of our surprise, we were the only two elected officials at that celebration. There was no one from the county. There was nobody from Spokane, nobody from Spokane Valley, Medical Lake, Airway Heights, none of our state representatives. I was shocked. For them to be our largest employer in this county. Little old us from Liberty Lake, we were the ones there supporting them. So I did have, did have the chance to talk to the commander of, of that group and, um, he's excited about trying to get more, more, uh, more involvement with the community. They change, change over there every two years, so it's usually hit or miss. So I think we're gonna have a good couple of years coming in front of us with some good community engagement out of them. So it was a great event, um, great history with that group. And the lady who sat between Linda and I, name was Linda. Her father, um, was lost in nineteen thirty nine, um, during the war and it took her quitting her job and working full time to try to locate his remains in Belgium, I believe it was, uh, which was about three years ago. And so she flew in from Virginia for, for the celebration. And there was, I guess there was a, a celebration, um, about three years ago when they brought his remains back to Fairchild. So it's amazing history with that group. So we, we look forward to some continued interaction with Fairchild and the, and the Air National Guard. Um, we've had, I've had a litany of meetings with Greater Spokane, Inc., Valley Chamber, uh, Visit Spokane, nothing major to report. Um, I did get a call from Journal Business, who was working with GSI on a regional publication. Uh, wanted to know if we wanted to advertise, um, in there to bring businesses in. And I said, we are, we're in a really fortunate position, A, that the, that the Journal Business does an amazing job covering Liberty Lake and everything going on here. And, you know, we're, we really have not had to go out and recruit any businesses. So it passed on the advertising because they pretty much do it for us for free. And upcoming, uh, Councilmember Kurtz and I have our next iteration of our Washington Collaborative Elected Leadership Institute. I got that out really well that time. Um, coming up, this is a remote session and then we, um, go on to Everett in September. So we will, um, we're looking forward to bringing that information back to you guys. Um, so that's it for me. Um, city administrator report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, if you look at your, uh, printed copy of the city administrators report, we got a couple of events and reminders that we want to bring to your attention. Starting with the, uh, ever popular Lud Kramer Memorial Concert, this is our, um, chance to see the Spokane Symphony in action at Pavilion Park. That's gonna be on August thirty first. Um, that is always a great show, and so we would encourage, uh, anyone who's interested in that to come out and join everyone for that performance. Um, if it was like last year, it's gonna be outstanding again. And so we look forward to seeing you out there. Labor Day, Monday, September the second, the city will be observing that by closing city hall in the library. Um, and then followed shortly the following Thursday by the beginning of school for Central Valley School District. And so, um, I point that out because, uh, the roads will become congested again during the AM and PM peaks. And you'll have little folks walking around all over the place, going to school and coming from school. So, uh, pay particularly close attention when you're out on the roadway, starting September the fifth. Not that you shouldn't always, but, um, even more so then. And then finally, uh, town hall. We've talked about this a couple of times before on September the tenth. We are going to have our transparency and local government town hall over at the Trailhead clubhouse in the Rotary Room. I'm not going to talk too much about the details because I know Summer Darrow is gonna brief you on part of this when she provides the Community Engagement Commission's report. But you have a draft agenda in front of you that I just wanted to point out and give you an opportunity to kind of scan through that to get a general sense of what the program for that evening is going to look like. And then also, uh, let you know that we've, um, printed out some invitation cards um, that will be circulated throughout the community in a variety of ways. And I think Summer's gonna touch on this as well, so I won't talk too much about that. But there's a stack of them over on the table in the entryway. If you want to take a few of them to pass out to neighbors or friends or acquaintances, we would love to have you help us get the word out about the town hall. Uh, before I move on to the other items on the agenda, are there any, any questions about the events or the reminders? Or the reminders of the events, excuse me? Yes, ma'am.
Um, well, I, yeah, I see that you printed those cards out already, but, um, Councilmember Kurtz and I were discussing that date, September tenth. Um, that is going to be the same evening as the first presidential debate. And also it's really close after school starts. So we were concerned there may not be a very good turnout. I don't know if it's too late to change the date, but.
We have, uh, talked about this date for several months and we have locked several pieces of this event in. And so it would be very difficult to change it at this point.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, uh, second meeting of the month. Uh, it's council's opportunity to hopefully have had a chance to review the departmental reports. Um, and if you have any questions of department heads about those, feel free to fire away and we will provide answers.
I don't think, um, but I will comment and I shared this on social media, especially since the library is top of most people's minds right now. I was, it was unbelievable when I started crunching the numbers on the difference between July of twenty twenty three and July of twenty twenty four. Um, and I'm doing this from memory, um, books checked out. And this is not ebooks, this is not audio books, this is books. Checkouts in July of twenty twenty four were twenty, up twenty eight percent over twenty twenty three. Storytime attendance was up eighty two percent July this year over last year. So, um, really, really looking forward to, uh, making progress on what's going to happen with the new, new building for the library. And for those in attendance, a lot of new faces. Love to hear you weigh in, uh, but it just goes to show, you know, how much our library provides, um, you know, community and space as well. And to, to get, you know, so many participates, participants in the programs is just amazing.
And if you'll recall, all of Jandy's previous reports, including the ones that they make before council, all of their numbers are trending up. So that's, that's a good sign. Um, and I'll, I'll take the, oh, sorry. Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if this will come up later in the Parks and Arts Commission discussion, or if I should bring it up now.
Can you get closer to your mic, please?
I'm sorry. Um, in the report from, um, uh, operations and, um, gosh, um, okay, anyway, um, operations and maintenance, uh, about the public art. Now, should that come up now or when they do their presentation, Parks and Arts?
If you have a question about the information contained in the report, now's as good a time as any.
Um, I'm curious if these proposals for the, uh, these, this proposal for the art, public art at the corner of Country Vista and, you know, over by the Kramer Parkway, if this is it. I mean, did we have any other proposals besides this? Uh, I had texted or I emailed Jen uh, Camp and asked her about it and, um, she, you know, I don't know. She didn't know if there was other proposals. So is this it?
I believe.
No, there, there were no other proposals. And Laura is, Laura Frank and Nancy Hill will certainly elaborate in their report further.
Okay, okay. Okay, well, if they're gonna elaborate later, then that's fine.
I'll also take the opportunity to point out that starting next month, uh, you'll have, uh, in addition to the report you already received, a public works report that will be added um, to the mix. Um, and with that, um, I will invite Ben Turner up to the podium. Um, and as he's making his way up there, uh, remind the council that Ben is our new public works director. He started effective August the twelfth. Um, and it's been several meetings since you confirmed Ben. And, uh, and so we wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to introduce you to him and him to you at tonight's meeting. And so with that, I'll let Ben introduce himself and then you can ask him any questions you would like.
Uh, thanks, Mark. Uh, so yeah, like, like Mark said, it's been about four months, uh, since I was confirmed. And I apologize, my video didn't work uh, during that event. Uh, so now you can see how tall I am. Um, not thinking.
Raising the average at city hall.
Yep. Yep. Um, so, uh, just a little bit about me. I, I grew up in the Dows, Oregon. Uh, it's about four miles, four hours away from here. Uh, attended the University of Oregon. After that, I joined the Navy. So I just wrapped up a twenty-two year career in the Navy and I promise the Navy's done with me, Mayor. Uh, at least I think, um, but, uh, so I, I spent, uh, my re, most recent, uh, position, I was the public works director at Naval Air Weapons Station China Lake, uh, down in the Mojave Desert. If you've seen Top Gun Maverick, that's where it was filmed. Well, most of the desert parts anyway. Um, so, uh, I spent the last three years there running a department, um, really enjoyed it, really enjoyed my engagement with the city there. And that's kind of why I started looking at a position such as this, uh, as I retired from the Navy. I'm really excited, uh, to get down and get to work. And I, uh, appreciate the opportunity to continue serving.
Right. As a reminder, so Ben's sitting over in the public works yard. Uh, well, it, he's got an office, not just in the yard. Uh, but that's where you'll find him. Um, we're in the process of transitioning, um, you know, things between, you know, the, the crew that's going from Jen to, to Ben and lots of meetings. And there's a, a informal, uh, more informal get together tomorrow. Um, but we're look, really looking forward to you getting your, digging your heels in. And I'm glad you made it past your first week and you stuck around.
Yes, ma'am. I just, I just want to thank, uh, Lisa Key and Jen Camp. They've been great, uh, gonna get me coordinated and, and kind of orientated with, uh, how the city works. Just want to thank them.
So anybody have any questions?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Ben.
We're really excited, uh, as we've talked about before, in the period of growth that the city has undertaken and the kind of the position of maturity that we are in right now and will continue to be in as we continue to grow, Ben is gonna be instrumental uh, in his department, um, and, and working with the other department heads and the leadership of the city of making sure that growth and development happens in an organized, orderly way according to our comprehensive plan. So we're all excited for him to, um, orient himself, get acclimated and then start, um, showing us what he can do. And so, thanks, Ben. Um, it, one other thing, it's not specifically on the agenda, but since we're talking about staff and reports, I just want to remind council of some communication protocols. There have been lots of instances. I don't want to get into specifics, but if, if, if council is reaching out to staff, we, we encourage that. We want there to be open lines of communication. But if we're talking about, uh, items on the agenda or asking about operational, um, contingencies, staffing, all of those kinds of things, please include me on those emails. I would really appreciate being kept in the loop on those discussions. Um, and so we can get you the right information in a timely way, um, and make sure that it's confirmed and it meets your needs. And so, um, and then vice versa, if that's happening, going, uh, from staff to you, let me know because if things aren't happening timely, I can help with that. So, um, keep that in mind as, as we go forward.
And we also like that because we, we try to get out, to get the question, the answer out to everybody else. Because if you're thinking it, chances are somebody else is thinking it as well. So we like everybody to have the same, same information.
And then finally, uh, capital projects updates. Uh, we have recently, and as you all know, we, uh, started using a engagement portal about a year and a half ago. Uh, it's called Zen City. Um, it's a, a, uh, a tool that allows us to, in a variety of different ways, go out and, and get uh, public input on topics in different, um, using different techniques and, and then all compiling and analyzing data. And so one of the capabilities that this tool gives us is, uh, essentially providing capital project updates um, as things are happening, particularly those things that are going to affect the public, whether it's uh, because of, uh, travel, um, changes and roadway closures or things like that, or things that are going to potentially close facilities or change hours of facilities. And so we wanted to update council and the public that this uh, new source of information is out there. We're hoping that everyone hits this through our website. So libertylakewa.gov uh, will allow you to go right to our engage platform. And what you will see when you get there is a, uh, selection of different project pages. Um, and so you'll see the, currently, the library survey is out there, the Appleway and Country Vista project is out there. The twenty twenty five budget engagement is out there. The, um, Barefoot in the Park, uh, follow-up survey is out there. And so as we continue to um, initiate capital projects, you will see more and more project pages show up on this landing page. And the idea is when you get to one, you, you may have gone there to find out about the Appleway and Country Vista project, not knowing that these other projects were in some stage of completion. And you get to then, uh, navigate around and find out information about all of those things. And if there is an open survey about something that you're interested in taking, you can do that too. Um, and so that is out there. It's live, it's active. Um, and on the transparency and local government town hall invitation that we talked about, there is a QR code that will take you to that landing page. And so we're trying to get this word out to, uh, as many people in as many ways as we can, hopefully to, again, all designed to get more and more and more engagement from more and more and more people throughout the community. So, um, it's there, it's live, it's ready to be used. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. And if not, that concludes my report, Mayor.
Okay, great. All right, we will move on to the Parks and Arts Commission. See, we've got Laura Frank and Nancy Hill here. Welcome, Laura. Good to see you. It's been a while.
Uh, Mayor and council members, thank you for allowing me to provide you with an update on what we've been up to. Uh, so we have some slides that we had submitted. Wait, just hold up a second. They're coming. Okay, so the first item that, um, we'd like to update you on is the Trailhead Art Wall. Uh, we did have a call to artists for a whimsical map that has closed. Uh, we did receive and review the submissions, um, and have made an artist recommendation that we would like to move forward with. Um, that being said, we did receive some feedback from stakeholders. Um, so we're going to do a closer design review and that's scheduled to take place at our next meeting on September ninth. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, the Kramer, um, intersection, I'm gonna, uh, Councilmember Ball, I heard your question. So I'm gonna start with just a little bit of background on the project. Um, for those of you that are not familiar with it, it's part of what we call our Liberty Lake Together Art Theme. Um, this was kind of born out of, I will say COVID era, um, as a way to really highlight the way that our community united and supported each other. And so that is, um, loosely based on the Liberty Lake Together flag. And so that is, there is, um, a series of artwork that has been, um, I guess, scheduled for years out in our strategic plan to follow this theme. So the, the location that was selected for this artwork is, uh, Kramer Parkway and Country Vista Intersection. Um, we had originally targeted installation this year that was not really feasible. So, um, we are looking for a twenty twenty five installation. Um, we did receive the submission, um, and we are recommending council approval to move forward with an artist agreement that we will draft and have ready for the September meeting for your approval. Um, just a little more on this proposed piece, as it is a perforated metal design, there's fused glass that would be inset within it. There would be lighting and landscaping that would highlight this artwork. Um, and then next slide, please. So one of the, the things that I really want to highlight is that this is a rendering. It is a proposal. It is not what the final piece is going to look like. This is an example from the, one of the two artists that are partnering together on this project of what an original submission looked like versus. of what an original submission looked like versus what the installed piece looks like. So I hear that there are some concerns over it, but I really want to emphasize that this is a rendering. So what you will have installed does not look like the picture that was on the previous slide. The pillars are laid out and designed, meant to mimic the foothills that Liberty Lake is situated within. Fused glass, if you can go to the next slide, please, is inset within each of those. It's selected to be bright and colorful. It is a local Liberty Lake artist that does that work. They are open to ideas and suggestions, but within, and it's hard to tell in the picture that's included with your packet, but on each of those rounds is the Liberty Lake Together logo, so the people. So there's a lot of different variations of how they're going to fuse the glass. They're doing it such in a manner that it will be very difficult to vandalize. They're doing it such that it will be hard to scratch. Again, the lighting and landscaping will all be put in this area to highlight this art.
I couldn't tell from the picture, how, about how tall is the range on the pillar?
So each of the panels is about four feet tall. We've discussed as a commission, and this would, we would work with the artists in the landscape design. And you can see, sorry, if you could go back one slide, her previous work was on a concrete pedestal, and that's certainly something that we can do to create a little more dimension within the piece, if that's something that's desired. But we had talked about putting it on a concrete platform of some sort. So then the landscaping around can really highlight it and not block it. And same thing with the lighting. So the lighting, as you're coming through that intersection, would really highlight the color coming through the fused glass. And I think really be a beautiful addition to our city. So again, for council, we're looking for your approval to move forward with this artist and create an artist agreement.
Beautiful work, and I'm excited about its installation. Please, just throughout the installation process, have visibility with respect to sightlines at the intersection in mind. Drivers and visibility.
Absolutely. And the placement, we talked about that at our last meeting. The placement that's in the rendering is not necessarily the placement of where the piece will be. That is something that, you know, they've done, as you can see in this example, other artwork that's on main roadways. And so that was something that was brought up and will certainly be taken into consideration. And the other thing too, is there are, there's a utility box there that's slated to be wrapped. And so that design would be selected to complement the artwork as well, so it wouldn't stand out from it or take away from it.
Right, great. Go ahead, Councilmember Kurtz.
This might not be a question for you, but for the city itself. But is the whole park area, that the land, going to be something other than what it is now? To, is that part, what you mean by landscaping, like the, assuming grass on that?
And Lisa might be able to comment on this. My understanding is that it's not intended to be a place where people would gather and linger. And so the landscaping would be such not to encourage congregation necessarily. But I, that's only my understanding.
Right, Councilmember Kennedy.
Laura, I love the colors, fantastic. Now the lighting, now, is it, is the lighting in front of it or is it from behind? Is, will there be lighting coming through the art?
We haven't gotten that far yet, so that would be part of the landscape design.
Very good. I would hope that they, you mentioned about maybe being raised on concrete or something like that. Intersections tend to sometime, you get somebody who runs through them and hits stuff. So I'm sure you guys are taking into consideration if it was elevated well enough on a concrete slab or something like that, then also maybe some guards put in front of that, that wouldn't be intrusive to look at in the event of a car goes through there.
We could certainly look at that. Again, the final location within that plot of land has not been selected.
Great, beautiful.
Thank you.
Yeah, the question, Councilmember Ball, go ahead.
So I guess my trouble with this is I don't really see how it relates to Liberty Lake. I mean, you said this is supposed to be the foothills, but I think of Liberty Lake, I mean, like a golfer or the goats, we talked about the goats. There was, is there any other option that you could bring in to introduce to us?
Not for this particular project. Again, this is part of the Liberty Lake Together series. And within the fused glass, it highlights those, the symbols within that. There are plans in our budget for future installations that would include goats or could certainly be golf themed. But for this particular project, that was not the intent.
Yeah, the Liberty Lake Together logo is the one with the people kind of hold like this in the circle. So this is the artist's interpretation.
This is the, and that's what the call to artists was for. It was not for a sculpture for the entry into Liberty Lake. It was specifically for the Liberty Lake Together series. This is something that is a multi-year, the intent was, and the first installations in Rocky Hill Park, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it, the flowers, the plants are meant to mimic that person in the Liberty Lake Together. So that was the first installation, this would be the second. And then, again, we don't have our budget finalized, but strategically, we are looking to continue that theme in additional sculptures located throughout the city. Not to take away from your comment of goats or golf theme, those are certainly other things that are on our radar, just not for this particular project.
So the actual columns, not the fused glass, they're made out of?
They're perforated metal. So she, the one artist is a metal worker and painter, and she does mosaic work. And then the second artist specifically does fused glass. So they're currently collaborating on a project in Riverfront Park as well. So there'll be examples, hopefully soon, that we can share pictures of, but they're currently doing a collaboration.
Oh, so it's already being installed or?
No, no, this is a separate project.
No, the one in?
No, they're building it now to be installed later this year.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Kennedy and Councilmember Spencer.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Spencer.
Yeah, just to clarify, so you're going to be able to see the glass from both sides? Or is it just going to be on one side?
Uh, just on the one side.
Okay.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Love seeing the art. I hope that you guys are looking at increasing your budget. That's short of substantial. Benny and I have the fortune of being able to travel over the years. And what's interesting is much we travel with an RV, we're in towns and stuff. The thing that catches our attention is the art.
Absolutely.
It brings it to us, an airy type of a city. We were in Libby, Montana last weekend, we're in a jazz festival. And driving around the town, we didn't notice the town and the buildings so much, but what we did notice was the art. And that's what we've talked about, the music was great. But we're talking to our neighbors about, gee, the art was great, they had a 25-foot white eagle, both entrances. So I think that's something that I'm excited about the city, we're going that direction and more the merrier.
Yeah, we're excited as well, and excited for the support to expand what we're looking at. So I guess if there's no objection, we'll look for the artist agreement to come forward. Yes, please. Okay, next slide. Sorry, I have a couple more. Trying not to take up too much more of your time. So the next item that we discussed, Janey came and presented, she heard that we were looking at different budget structures. And she came and presented on the library building. And through that discussion, we'd like to recommend that council approve utilizing that project as a pilot project for future funding. We talked about, and this has been in some of our research, 1% of the capital budget of that project being allocated for arts to be incorporated in the building, around the building as part of the design. So that can be functional art such as decorative benches or bike racks. It can also be murals, there's a wide range of things that that could be applied to. But we were fully supportive of Janey's proposal to use that as a pilot project and collaborate with her. Okay, next slide. Hey, other business, Commissioner Ferris had recommended and put together a Bike Pedestrian Safety Advisory Committee. They have formed their meeting monthly, the next meeting is August 26th at New Love Coffee at 8:30 in the morning. Priorities that they're looking at is how we can make Liberty Lake known as a bike-friendly community, including safe practices, creating a master plan of busy intersections, and how we can promote safety and make it a safer way for both bikers and pedestrians in those areas. Okay, next slide. And finally, hitting on Councilmember Kennedy, we are looking at our budget and looking at the next few years. We have, as of our last meeting, approved a draft budget. Our final discussions and final approval of that are slated for our September meeting. We look to share those details with you at the September 17th City Council meeting. Within that, I think, I believe it's on the agenda tonight, we did move to support the Winterglo sponsorship. So the approval of that invoice, but we would also like to recommend considering a 20% increase in that budget, just to continue to grow that event. And the other item that we moved to support would be an increase in the Fourth of July Firework Display to allow for a 13 to 15-minute show.
I'll be putting that in the budget, it's up to these guys to say yes.
And so stay tuned, next month, we'll have more details on that. Any questions for me on the Parks and Arts Commission?
Doesn't look like it. Thanks for your work.
Yeah, thank you so much for your time.
Appreciate it. Okay, next up, we have Planning Commission. I'm sure I thought maybe Mr. Solberg was here for Planning Commission, welcome.
We really don't have a whole lot more to report from, and I'm not going to take up a whole lot of your time, but we've been continuing to meet with regard to the issues that are on the agenda tonight. And so I'd just like to address those briefly, not for the council members as much as for the the citizens that are here and those who may be listening. When we make our recommendations, which is all they are, advice to the council, when we make those recommendations, we don't make the recommendations taking a look at a specific one-person issue. So if somebody doesn't like whatever it is that's on there, okay, they get their time to have their discussion, and then everybody else weighs in. Our job is to represent the entire community, not to represent one particular thing. We try to stay away from any bias or any agenda. And one of the things that we have to look at is our governance goal, which is number one. And you see it all the time, it's in your packet again tonight, to actively involve residents, businesses, and property owners in the governance of the city. We take that into consideration in every single one of the proposed amendments. Also, a land use goal, to provide a healthful, safe, and sustainable urban environment. Those, every time that we come up with something, these things are right before us. They're a part of the comprehensive plan, they're a part of our strategic plan. We have an economic development goal too, which is one that the mayor has reminded me several times if I had a discussion about something. And that's that we need to maintain a healthy and a sustainable local economy. If people want to have nice things, unless you want to pay, unless you want to go into debt, then you have to have increased revenues. Those are the things that we consider. There's other things, there's about a dozen other things that we consider. But I just say that the purpose of the Planning Commission, again, is to study and make the recommendations to the mayor and city council for Liberty Lake's future growth. In doing that, we continually review the city's comp plan and development codes. You know where that's found? Yeah, it's in ordinance number 75, which by the way, needs to be revised.
We'll get there, we're on number 23.
Language, yes. Anyway, we meet the second Wednesday of every month at 4 o'clock, and please feel free to attend. If you have any questions, the issues that we were discussing have been on, are there on the agenda tonight, so.
Right, anybody have any questions for?
Doesn't look like.
Mr. Solberg. All right, thanks so much. Next up, Community Engagement Commission, I see Summer Darrow here.
Hello, council. I know Mark is usually the one giving our update, but I thought I would join y'all this, this time. Just really quick, I can run through these. We recently had a really good time at Barefoot in the Park. It was great, we were next to Scope, giving out, they were giving out bike helmets for kids, which was a big hit. They went through all those. The little kids were really enjoying, and some adults putting recommendations, wishlist items for things that they wanted to see in the park. There were great things like lower monkey bars, monkey bars, you get a prize only if you finish. A lot of water stuff, everyone was writing that they wanted a pool, as if we're going to get a pool real soon at Pavilion Park. But it was nice to see people talking about that and what the common themes were. And it was really engaging and fun, and we all took some time talking to neighbors. And that's pretty much what we're about. So we had, it was a really organic and nice, nice time. In addition to Barefoot in the Park and the other things that we typically do and are at, like Farmer's Market, we've been talking more about what other local things we should be more present at. Thursday night at Rocky Hill, anytime the city has a booth, kind of piggybacking over, you know, with that. Just anything that we feel is appropriate for whatever reason, and if there's something specifically we're trying to engage with, if there's a survey going on about the library, whatever that thing is, just trying to be present during that time. Talked more about giving short presentations to some of the area service organizations, Kiwanis Lions Club, et cetera. Some of us are on those, on those groups. And specifically, we're excited about the upcoming town hall meeting, which it talked about briefly. I don't have too much more to go into, other than saying we have little cards here. Please take them, I've started taking pictures of them, sending them out to people, giving them to people. And yes, it is a, another event going on in government that night. But I would hope that this is a local government moment that we can perhaps affect more change in. And we all know that there'll be clips of the other, probably for days to come after. And this is a chance to really engage with our community. We came to the place of doing this because we heard your ask. And I feel like we did a really good job of working together recently, and we're looking forward to more of that. The meet and greet at the beginning, a great opportunity for all of you, one-on-one, to speak with people who've maybe seen or heard about you and not really had the time. And for us to engage with each other, we have all the commissions that want to have a table. And again, within the spirit of transparency, saying, hey, we have open positions, there are vacancies. Come join us, find out more about us. And then a more formal moderated conversation as well, all again, in the Transparency Act theme. But we're excited about this because we're hoping that we can do more of these things, whatever that looks like. Maybe it's more of the same on different topics, and we get used to having people engage in this way with you. And maybe it's something totally different, but we're just excited that I feel like we're finally getting the ball rolling as a group and figuring out how you can use us and how we can work with the city to get stuff done. Otherwise, we had our, the initial joint meeting with the Planning Commission on August 7th, and we're talking about outreach for the upcoming comp plan. We're excited about that. And again, I think this is a perfect example of how we can all work together. And there are very specific asks and needs in that comprehensive plan for community engagement, very specifically mandated topics and pieces. So hopefully, we can all come together and give some new, unique ideas. And also just really figure out what other people want and be the, be the voice piece for that. Anything else? I think our upcoming annual report is going to be Robin. And she'll present on that in September. But otherwise, we're just, I think we're really starting to figure out how we can get everything that you guys want and what other people out there want, and figure, figure it out one meeting at a time, so.
Pretty much on schedule, I think it takes about, you know, 12 to 18 months for any commission to really start getting their groove on.
Yeah, it feels like that, but yeah.
You're doing great.
Anyway, that's it.
Anybody have any questions while Summer's here?
Pass these out, this is a, this is a big opportunity for us, we're, we're really excited. I mean, we haven't had this in a while, and I think this is a perfect opportunity for us to really just move the ball forward together.
Yep, thanks. So, so that's when we're done, is a chance, we can put a stack of those at the concession stand at the movie that's coming, this coming weekend, right? Yeah, we'll get a stack.
And we've got postcards, we've got postcards going out, they're going to look like this, just a little bit bigger. So we're using our budget for mailings and trying to reach people other than just through Facebook and online. But we really would appreciate if you, obviously, you're going to be there, if you can be there. But, but passing them out would be a big deal and talking to people and getting them to come. Thanks.
Thanks. All right, next up, Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District, Bill, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Bill Genaway, the Commissioner for the Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District. I want to thank Mark and Ben for coming to our meeting last night. It was good to see him, and Ben's going to be kind of involved in our organization for a while. At least come to the meetings and tell us what's going on in the city. So it's, it's a good collaboration between the two agencies. So backflow testing, we're done. We have, we had some bumps, we had to do some shut offs. But generally, by the end of this week, we should have 99.9% of the tests in, and everybody in compliance. That's good. Just to speak about that a little bit, sometimes it's a matter of they forget. They're on vacation, they're not on a regular schedule. So to alleviate some of those problems, people need to get on a routine schedule every year to get the backflow tested. And there's, you know, several good testers in this area, and a lot of them are already full because they, they've been doing this for a while and everybody uses them. So get. get on a schedule. That way you won't forget and they'll the testers will do it and they send us the reporting. It's always third party. We don't take anything from the customer. We take it from the third-party tester. So that's that. Kenny Wells, we're gonna drill another well down here. We're having a little trouble with Department of Health. There's some separation between sewer lines and wells. Surprise. And so you have to meet that separation or they won't allow it. So we're within a few feet of it. Our district again this year in two thousand twenty-three, last year, I guess, Outstanding Treatment Plant Award from the Department of Ecology. Now, that's kind of a big deal. We kind of overlook it because I haven't been on this commission that long, but it seems like we get it every year. So we just kind of go, well, good job, you know. We kind of discussed it a little bit last night and said, you know, this is this is really kind of an important thing for our our operators and that treatment plan do an exceptional job. And it all benefits all of us because they do that. So out of three hundred wastewater treatment plant operations in the state of Washington, we were one of a hundred that got the award. So it's 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 quite a big deal. That's oh, we were talking about growth a little bit ago and funny thing happened the other day. We had a it's called One Point. It's a it's gonna be a large development apartment complex. They need a hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment for us to put the sewers in. Hundred thousand. Now, Little Liberty Lake hasn't seen this kind of thing for a long time. Probably never to have that one order on a permit. It's already paid for. All we have to do is order it and get it in place for them to use as they build this thing out. So yes, Liberty Lake is growing. And we're all benefiting from that growth, including the Sewer and Water District. A lot of the reasons are rates are lower than some places is because of the growth and the permitting that we the money that we get from permitting. So we're very fortunate for that. That's all I got. Any questions?
I I will say, in addition to your two thousand twenty-three award, I had family in from Long Island back in July for my son's wedding, and they were amazed that they could drink the water out of the faucet. So.
We have these contests every year and Liberty Lake always wins.
Yeah. So that was that was an interesting thing for them to comment on, but thumbs up. Okay. All right. It looks like that's it for our reports and inquiries. We have no workshops tonight. So we move on to consent agenda. Councilmember, would you like to move the consent agenda?
Yes. Madam Mayor, I move items ten, A, B, and C.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Councilmember Kennedy. All right, we have a motion to approve general business consent agenda items, A, B, and C. Do we have any comments? Oh, no, it's consent agenda. Never mind. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes five zero. On to action items.
Madam Mayor, I move action item eleven A, contract for Mission Avenue overlay design.
Do we have a second? A second from Councilmember Kennedy. All right, I know Lisa's here. If there are any questions for her on on this item, if anybody have any questions for Lisa, or do you want a background? If not, okay, then I'll go ahead and call for the vote. Those in in favor of awarding the contract for Mission Avenue overlay design, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Madam Mayor, I move general business item eleven B, interlocal agreement with Central Valley School District.
A second, Councilmember Kennedy. All right, any questions on this? This is an updated version of the agreement we have with Central Valley School District every year. We do not have chief or deputy chief here, but Mark can answer any questions you might have. Councilmember done.
I just really appreciate our cooperation within, you know, agencies in our community. So another successful agreement.
Any other questions, comments? All right, not hearing any. Those in favor of approving general business A, excuse me, B, the interlocal agreement with Central Valley School District, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Hey, we're up to council comments. This is your chance to any more, any additional comments in. We'll save the workshop review for a little bit later. Does anybody have anything else to add before we move on to our public hearings? Okay, not hearing any. Okay. So we're up to our public hearings and appeals at this point, since we do have quite a few members in attendance here and probably online. There will be two separate public hearings for the two proposed code amendments. Part of it, Lisa will do a little bit of quick background and then we will open up for comments. Still limited to three minutes at that at that point. Do we have a sign in? Or do you just want to use the yellow sheets? Oh, there is. Okay. So if if anybody could, if who's here, sign, go ahead and sign in. So we'll go ahead and turn it over to Lisa.
Evan, if you could bring up my presentation, please. So first of all, while we're getting into this, the first hearing is a privately initiated code amendment. It was initiated by Frontiera Development representing Topgolf. I want to be clear. This is a legislative action. It's a legislative amendment to your development code. What that means is that unlike quasi judicial, you can approve it, approve it with modifications or deny it for any reason whatsoever that you feel appropriate. That applies to both the amendments that we're going to hear tonight. And so I want to be absolutely clear on that. Next slide, please. So amendments, this is amendments to lighting standards for participant and spectator sports. It proposes to amend the lighting standards for those types of uses in the mixed-use zones, which include M one and M two, commercial zones, C one, C two, and RDC, and the light industrial zone I. It also amends limited use standards for participant and spectator sports in M one and M two, consistent with the amendments that we're making to the lighting standards so that we need internally consistent development code. Next slide, please. So I want to be clear on the definition for participant and spectator sports. Participant recreation, sports, participant sports and recreation use is in which in which the sport or recreation is conducted within an enclosed structure or an outdoor facility. Examples include, but are not limited to bowling alleys, roller and ice skating rinks, dance halls, racquetball courts, video game parlors, water parks, baseball and football stadiums, racetracks and arenas. Now, I want to say that some of those uses in this definition we do not allow. But that's the definition. Next slide, please. So again, I know that you're all visual. I'm a visual person. I like to look at the map. This applies to the commercial zones and the mixed-use zones. So M one and M two are the purple zones. Gray is light industrial and commercial is are the red zones. So those are and yellow is the C one zone. So basically, the the areas outlined in red are the zones that this this would potentially apply to for this specific use. Next slide, please. So I want to point out a couple of things. In terms of what we're actually changing for participant and spectator sports, the hours of operation are expanded from eleven PM to twelve thirty AM on weekdays and one thirty AM on Fridays and Saturdays in these specific zones. Glar rating increased to a G five in applicable zones, providing the lighting is located no closer than a hundred and fifty yards from the nearest residential zone. It also provides that light trespass shall be allowed on adjacent properties with a recorded perpetual easement allowing for said light trespass. As I've mentioned before, we had already made that interpretation in our code that that would apply. That if you had a shared parking lot as an example, and you had an easement for that light trespass, we had no issue with it crossing the property boundary if the owners did not. Next slide, please. In terms of amending the standards in the M one and M two zones, so this these are limited uses in this zone. So we wanted to make sure that we eliminated hours of operation so such that the hours of operation are now just addressed specifically in the lighting standard. So it's just taking out duplication. Next slide, please. This is our procedural summary. I'm not going to go through this in detail we did at the workshop, but it's important for you to know that we that we met all of the procedural requirements for this code amendment. Next slide, please. And the first set of relevant comp plan goals and policies really deal with kind of the overarching process of engaging our public and economic development, et cetera. Next slide, please. I've highlighted a couple that I think are are particularly relevant. And that's the urban design policy fourteen related to our community's night sky. Outdoor lighting should be downward facing, which it still is, and shall be limited in height, intensity of fixtures and and the intensity of fixtures needed to provide sufficient life, light and identification on residential, commercial and other development. Economic development policy four, continue to support the startup retention, expansion and recruitment of businesses. And economic development policy number five, provide consistent, fair and timely regulations that are flexible, responsive and effective. So all of them are relevant. These were the ones that we felt were particularly relevant in this case. Next slide, please. So the Planning Commission made the following recommended findings that the SEPA review had been completed on the proposed amendment and that all public and agency notice requirements were met and accomplished in a timely manner. The public was provided the opportunity for early and continuous participation. And the public had the opportunity to submit written comments and testify at a public hearing before the Planning Commission. Next slide, please. The Planning Commission reviewed the the standards for approval of a code amendment and came to the following conclusions that the amendment is consistent with the comp plan and is not detrimental to the public welfare. The proposed amendment is not warranted by a change in economic, technological or land use conditions. The proposed amendment is necessary to correct it is not, excuse me, necessary to correct an error and it's not necessary to clarify meaning or intent. It is necessary to provide for a use that was not previously addressed. And the proposed amendment is deemed necessary by the Planning Commission as being in the public interest. Next slide, please. So their recommendation, and this was a unanimous a unanimous recommendation, was to for the amendment to be approved as proposed and they it was actually workedshopped a number of times and actually evolved through the course of those workshops. So they were satisfied with the final version. Next slide, please. So this is because we have an applicant in this case, the applicant does have an opportunity to testify. I do want to say that following the applicant's testimony, we'll have public testimony, and then the applicant should be given the opportunity to rebut any public testimony before you all go into your deliberations. So with that.
So do we open it now? Open the public hearing now? With the applicants? Okay. All right. We will open the public hearing at eight oh three PM. Welcome.
Thank you, everyone. Just wanted to say thank you to Lisa and the City of Liberty Lake Plan Engineering Department, Planning Commission, and working with us on all the workshop to date on its lighting code amendment. They've been great to work with, so I just wanted to make sure that I recognized them before I got started. If you wouldn't mind, if you could pull up the presentation?
I want to get the mic just a little closer.
Sure.
If you can.
Yeah, we have a couple of videos in the file, so just like huge in size. Hello, everyone. My name is Scott Weddling. I'm the Director of Real Estate Development for Topgolf. Greatful to be here to give you all. I just wanted to give you all a brief overview of Topgolf, who we are and what we hope to bring to the City of Liberty Lake. Next slide, please. Just a high-level overview of Topgolf as a company. We were acquired by Callaway Golf in two thousand twenty-one, and shortly thereafter, Callaway kind of went all in and fully committed to the company and renamed itself Topgolf Callaway Brands. And we have a bunch of economic drivers and summaries here that I wanted to just kind of go over real quick. We've been in business for over twenty years and we have over twenty-five thousand employees. We call them associates. We have over one hundred venues operating worldwide, ninety in the US and ten international, about to open our hundred and first in a couple of weeks. We open approximately ten venues per year. And with that, on this particular project in Liberty Lake, we hope to bring the economic impact that you see below that is reflected based on previous projects. It is about a twenty-four million dollar build. We hire and employ approximately a hundred and fifty people during the phases of construction and creates two hundred and twenty-five jobs once we opened, bringing in about fourteen to seventeen million dollars in revenue per year. And with that, we have about two hundred and fifty visitors per year that come to our venues. Something that's not reflected here is Topgolf is often considered a destination attraction. So we tend to bring guests from outside the surrounding areas and they oftentimes will remain in the area, which will, you know, rising tide floats all boats. So hopefully we'll bring benefit to the local businesses as well.
Just real quick. I think you had said two hundred and fifty visitors per year. So for those who aren't following along, your slide says two hundred and fifty thousand, which I believe is probably more accurate.
Two, yeah, that, thank you. Next slide, please. Something that we've talked about in planning or Planning Commission was similar-sized venues and similar markets. So we put together this slide to kind of show the similar markets that we have been built in in the previous three years that are either open or currently under construction. All those venues you see there are currently open except for Des Moines, which is the one I was referring to earlier that opened in a few weeks. So just to kind of give you a perspective of similar market at Liberty Lake. Next slide, please. We all know Liberty Lake is a golf community and Topgolf is focused on being a a great partner with local courses and ranges. Topgolf mission is basically just to grow the game of golf however we can. And one of the best ways that we do that is we bring in inexperienced and experienced players to the game. This is just a snapshot to show the diversity of experienced versus inexperienced players when they've come to Topgolf to experience the game of golf. And the biggest highlight to me on this slide is the fifty-one percent on the bottom. Fifty-one percent are non-golfers, meaning people have like never picked up a golf club before in their life. And they come to Topgolf and they get exposed to the game of golf. We are basically, our entire company mission is to just simplify the barriers of entry to golf. Obviously, it's a pretty overwhelming game. You want to go out there and play eighteen holes and you know, it's it's a four-hour commitment and it's it's a lot for someone that wants to get into the game. So we try to break down those barriers the best that we can. We don't charge to rent golf clubs. They're all provided for you. There's no membership fee when you come in. We welcome anyone to come and just just experience the game and hopefully enjoy it. Next slide, please. Just some community benefits. We are a big advocate in getting involved in community once we are open. Next slide, please. One of the benefits we have is we call we call it play it forward, but basically we partner with local middle school and high schools for going to game of golf once again. So if you have a golf team or you want to create a golf team and it's raining, it's snowing, whatever, it doesn't matter, since our bays are all covered, we welcome them and partner with those schools to bring their teams out. Playtime is free Monday through Thursday from nine AM to five. And we have full-time PGA Tour professionals that work on each of our venues. So we partner with them and try to help kid learn and grow and enjoy the game. Next slide, please. Uh, so we partner with them and try to help kids learn and grow and enjoy the game. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, heroes discount. I mean, Topgolf loved our, our heroes who watch out for all of us. That's the gentleman behind me. Uh, we offer a discount to all, to all of our uh, heroes out there. Uh, on all of our optional monthly memberships and as well as everyday gameplay. Uh, next slide, please. Um, just once again, we have national partners. We actually, uh, what's not listed on here is um, the Special Olympics. We're actually a sanctioned official event for the Special Olympics uh, this, this year, which is pretty cool opportunity. So uh, Special Olympics, uh, will, each of our venues will host an event. So uh, they don't have to travel as far and they can play and it'll be a unified event across all of our venues. And it'll be an official sanctioned Special Olympics event. It's pretty cool. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so each of our venues will, um, once again, they'll partner with the local community and try to get organized and volunteer activities. And all of our associates are encouraged to get involved however they can. Uh, next slide, please. I was saying earlier, our, each of our venues had a full time golf professional on staff. And they helped uh, run some of our uh, summer academies, kids camps. I personally take my kid to uh, Topgolf camp, like nine, twelve, five days a week. Uh, they get the lunch, they get to play, they have a great time. So um, something to consider if you, when we come to town. Uh, next slide, please. Um, pictures always paint a thousand words. So I wanted to just show you a couple of images of what we're proposing to bring here. Um, basically I've got some real life shot of our recently opened venue in Boise and Wichita. Uh, so next slide, please. So just a front, front, front image of the building that we're proposing here. It is a two story venue. Uh, seventy two hitting bays, which basically um, each bay is what we considered like a bowling lane alley. So you can come and you can rent a bay for uh, six people or eight people, six players. Um, and there'll be thirty six per floor and you're um, you basically just rent it out by the hour. Uh, next slide, please. So as you walk in, there's a two story restaurant, bar and video wall. Um, you, you don't have to play golf to come to Topgolf. You can just come eat dinner, uh, watch the game on the big screen TV, enjoy a drink with friends and go home. There's no entry fee. It should encourage you to just come and just hang out. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, just another image of the, the video wall. We do have a full sized commercial kitchen and full sized bar. So um, we're, we're able to serve a full variety of food and beverages. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is an example of our hitting bay. So as you can see, some, some hitting bays will have couches and, and low top tables. Some will have like bar stools and high top tables. But the, the hitting mat, uh, seating for up to six to eight people. And then you can see, kind of see on the left and right side, those are like the clubs that are available for all your players. Uh, if you're left handed or you're a small child, um, we have those clubs available as well. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, just an example of our T line, our net poles in the outfield, just to protect from stray balls getting outside for those of us of. My, like myself to like to slice it more often than I should. Um, and one thing to note out is our lights are not on the poles. Uh, that's a common misconception. So all the lights that you could see are inside the building and mounted on the ceiling and pointed toward the outfield. Uh, that we do not have any lights on our poles. So uh, just wanted to clarify. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, just a cool example of you're talking about local art. We typically like to partner with uh, local artists if we can. Uh, this is just an example of a local mural artist that we contracted with in Wichita in our main stairwell. Uh, just to kind of give it like a new, new youthful vibe. So we'd like to partner however we can with the local artists and see what creative solution they can come up with. Uh, next slide, please. Um, once again, this is just outside the main bar um, that you saw earlier to the right, just outdoor bargains, fire pit. Uh, just a place to socialize and just hang out with family and friends or coworkers. Next slide, please. Uh, at the end of our hitting bays that we have these enlarged hitting bays that can accommodate up to ninety to a hundred people. Uh, so we can rent out these spaces for uh, corporate events if you decide to do so. So just an example of a different type of um, hitting bay or depending on the side of your party. Next slide, please. Uh, we also have more closed off and dedicated and more private events to host your next to get together. Could be birthday party or corporate networking event. Next slide, please. Um, so the main reason I'm here today, as Lisa uh, pointed out earlier, um, we're asking for, or applying for the amendment to the lighting ordinance to the development code. Um, Topgolf is very passionate about our lighting, uh, making sure that we, uh, we have a third party independent consultant. Comes out and dialed in all of our lights after we install them, uh, does photometric readings at all the property lines, make sure we don't have um, uh. Spill over according to our photometric plans. And um, we have extended loubers on our shield to reduce spill and glare. Uh, next slide, please. So uh, I think this is just kind of like a summary of what was already mentioned earlier. Um, like we said, we typically would open until uh, midnight on Monday through Friday. And then uh, one A M. On Saturday, Saturday and Sunday, which would um, just have that extra thirty minutes for picking up the golf ball and stuff toward the end. Uh, but during that thirty minutes, we, we do dim down the lights in the outfield, which I'll show you a video of what that looks like. That's uh, one of the questions that came up in the planning uh, workshop is what exactly does G five look like? I mean, I, I couldn't tell you, but I figured if I showed the video and a picture of it, that would help clarify what that actually means. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so I pointed out earlier, that circle is the actual light fixture that we're talking about here. That's the one that's pointed toward the outfield. Uh, it is dialed in, calibrated, got the, the shields on it. And it is pointed down toward the outfield. We typically uh, predominantly light up the first half of the outfield. And then it kind of just gradually spills out toward the end. Um, and we only light up from our side looking out. It doesn't matter the back of the golf ball is dark. You don't see it. Nobody sees it. So we don't have to light it up from the other direction or from the sides. It's only from the, the person hitting its perspective. So we only light it from inside the building. Next slide, please. Um, just as far as the mounting height, so those, those fixtures are twenty seven feet above finished floor elevation, similar to like a parking lot light that you would see. Uh, so once again, they are not on poles. They're like inside the building. Uh, next slide, please. So these, when we got, when we worked with planning in the workshop, um, we were trying to get a perspective of what is, what does G five mean? What's it look like? Um, this is Boise. We're located next to the highway there. Uh, this is an example of what it looks like at nighttime with our, our outfield lights are on. Uh, next slide, please. It kind of shows it from the side. Looking out, you can kind of see like the, basically from the, the T line, as we call it, to like green slash. It's supposed to be brown, kind of looks orange, but out to like the green and brown, it's like predominantly lit. And then it kind of like fades out as you work, work your way to the back. Uh, next slide, please. So this is like an actual video. I don't know if you can hit play on it, but just kind of shows that it's like ten seconds long. It just kind of shows. Um. What it looks like from an overhead perspective. Good. Thank you. Um, next slide is a picture of after hours and. I don't know if I'll be able to skip to that. There you go. Um. So after hours, that's the, that last thirty minute window I was kind of referring to earlier. Where so after closing to our guest, Topgolf will utilize that next thirty minutes to, for our cleanup crews and our um. Facilities crew to tidy up the facility for the next day. And one of those activities, our ball picker will go out there and pick up all the golf balls. Just like you see on the standard driving range in a golf course. And during that thirty minute window, we, all those lights are literally remote controlled through an iPad. So we dim them down to about thirty, thirty five percent of their capacity. To just so the guy can see where he's going and pick up the golf balls for that thirty minute window before we shut them off completely. Uh, next slide, please. And one more, this is the one, uh, this is the video I wanted to show you. This should be one more, one more. Um. There. There you go. So on this video, right when the guy's driving past the second pole, you'll kind of see how it goes from full luminesce to about thirty percent. And like right about now ish. There you go. So that's like the last thirty minutes. It'll be at that about brightness and put out last thirty minutes and then we shut it down for good. Uh, next slide, please. That's it. Um, thank you for your time. Hope the pictures kind of painted what we're, what we're asking for here and kind of shows where our lights are and how they're installed. Um, and once again, I'm Scott Weddling. Appreciate your time.
Right. Thank you. Is there appropriate for any questions or not? Not yet.
Grab the applicants. I, so I have to remind you again, as Commissioner Solberg so eloquently pointed out earlier on. This is not about the applicant. It's about the amendment and the uses that it would apply to not just Topgolf. But other potential users like the hub, like Little League fields, et cetera. And it's important for, for your deliberations to focus on the amendment. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for Scott before he sits down? Go ahead, Councilmember Kennedy.
Scott, what is the height of that uh, netting at the highest point?
Uh, one hundred and fifty six feet above the finished floor of the building.
Dizzy. Dizzy.
Dizzy, dizzy's misbehaving.
Where'd that come from?
Hundred and fifty six.
So the, the first pole is ninety feet and then it climbs fifteen feet. And then the fifth pole is at one fifty six and then they're all at one fifty six around the back and then it steps down again.
So the height is equivalent to the uh, clock tower downtown. That's a hundred and fifty feet. It's tall, man.
Okay.
Councilmember Ball.
So when you were showing those videos, what are the big lit up circles? What are, I mean, is that?
Those are, we call those our targets. They're basically just supposed to replicate greens, but that you, you aim for them.
Okay. Is there a way though for the customer to know in the exact distance that they actually throw the ball?
Yeah, our, all of our venues, um, all of our venues have what we call top tracer technology. So if you watch a PGA event on TV and a guy hits the drive, you see the lasers behind it. Uh, that's basically the Topgolf technology and that would be installed at this venue. So there are actually cameras. Scattered throughout the, the first and second floor that pick up your golf ball. So when you hit it, that ball dispenser in front of you is literally a TV as well. And it'll tell you all the stats you could possibly know, how fast it went, how high it went, the apex, all that fun stuff. It'll also tell you exactly where you landed. And that's kind of how we, you can keep score with different games like Angry Birds and other games that we have for. The younger crew, young, the younger audience. And then we often have more um, golf focused game for someone that wants to like try to have target practice. And kind of like work on their game specifically. So we have about dozens of games that you can choose from depending on your skill level.
All right. We can keep the questions going forward to the, to the amendment. That'd be great. Anybody else have any questions? All right. Now we open it up for, thank you. We open up for any public comment? Okay. Okay. And o- opening up one more time to anybody here in chambers if you'd like to sign up. Um, Kelsey will give one, one more look. If you would like to make a comment for the public hearing on the lighting code, proposed lighting code amendment change. That is what we're taking comment on now. Anybody have them? All right. Well, not hearing any. Um, okay.
I do have one written public comment that was submitted in advance and shared with council um, in support of the lighting code amendment from Jared Fontobel.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. So I guess we will go ahead and close the public hearing at eight twenty four. Thank you. All right. So we are on to next public hearing. No? Deliberation. Oh, that's right. I was thinking, because we don't have a vote tonight.
Right. You deliberate and then if you, depending upon what you deliberations, it may come back as an ordinance.
Gotcha. Okay, gotcha. Sorry. Been a while since we've done, it's only once a year. Okay. So any, anybody want to start off on this one? Councilmember Dunn first.
Um, so I, I, I find the work of the planning commission to be exhaustive and discovery related to the initiative and its amendment. Um, I think that the research done to demonstrate uh, how this applies to our community is sound. Uh, and I'm in support of the amendment.
Right. Thank you. Anybody else? Nobody? Councilmember Spencer.
I, I'm also in support of the amendment. I watched the uh, the deliberations with the planning commission. And uh, a- again agree that it was exhaustive and uh, so I would support uh, as, as they've submitted their recommendation.
Anybody else? You look like you want to say something? Nope. Okay. All right.
Um, in the integral staff, uh, is it a motion then to have this come forward as an ordinance in support?
My apologies for the purpose of wrapping up the deliberations. We're looking for a motion to approve, approve with modifications or deny.
Um, Madam Mayor, I move that the code amendment related to lighting uh, be approved as presented.
Do we have a second? We have a second from Councilmember Spencer. All right. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving without amendments, please, as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes five zero. We will look for that ordinance.
I will be bringing it back um, for a first read on September third.
Perfect. Okay. Now, second public hearings. This, this one is the development code amendment allowing fueling stations as an accessory use in the commercial zone. So again, teeing everybody up, if you uh, have comments on this proposed amendment, you will have a chance. Um, just make sure you sign up either online or here in the chamber. So we'll go ahead and let Lisa go through her thing. Then we'll open the public hearing.
Yeah. So thank, thank you, mayor. So again, this is a legislative matter. So um, as a legislative matter, you can. Recommend, or you can approve, you can uh, modify or you can deny for any reason or no reason. Next slide, please. Um, so this is, and I want to point out, this is a city initiated. We do not have an applicant. So um, uh. Gas stations and convenience stores um, have limited use standards in the, in the river district and the C two zone. Um, and these are their standards. Um, I want to point out, gosh, did I give you the right? I want to point out that um, the, the standards right now um, include underground storage tanks and stormwater disposal. Uh, not be located within a thousand foot radius of a wellhead, pump islands and other dispensing tanks. Such as propane shall be at least twenty five feet away from the right of way. And convenience stores and gas stations shall not exceed eight pumps. And the building footprint shall not exceed its eight thousand square feet in the river district, R D C zone. And it's five thousand in the C two zone. So just, just to be clear. Next slide, please. Um, so that's the only type of fueling station that's allowed is one associated with a convenience store. Under our current code, this uh, proposed new use category allows for accessory fueling stations. Um, as a limited use in R D C, C one and C two. And they must be accompanied um, by an accessory to a permitted principal use within that zone. Um, again, we're um, the planning commission recommended that we, that we not allow truck stops as limited use. It came up at the last meeting. Next slide, please. Came up at the last meeting. Oh, and here's the zones. We'll talk about this in a minute. Um, so uh, the zones where it would be, uh, where the limited use would be permitted are the C one and C two zones. And the R D C zones. Uh, no, it's actually, it's just C two in the, and C two and the um, R D C zone. Next slide, please. Um, so this is what the changes would look, it, I'm sorry, is C one. This is what the changes would look like. We would be adding this category with a limited use in our development code in C one and C two. Next slide, please. And the same thing for the R D C zone in um, the river district. Next slide, please. Um, so these are the proposed standards um, for the accessory fueling station. Um, that it has to be an accessory to a principal use. This Um, that it has to be an accessory to a principal use. This permitted within the zone, except that the truck stop. Truck stops as the principal use shall be expressly prohibited. Underground storage tanks, pump islands, uh, the underground storage tank rule would stay the same. And again, pump islands and other fuel dispensing, dispensing stations would also have that set pack from the right of way. Um, but fueling stations shall not exceed twelve pump sites. A pump site is one dispenser which is, which may be double sided. At the last meeting, you asked about, um, the definition of a truck stop and I did check in the development code. We do not have a definition in there. So. Uh, one of the things that, that staff is recommending is that a definition be added to this. Since planning commission is already, has already heard this and what you have before you is planning commission's recommendation. Um, I provided on your desks, uh, definition for truck stop. Next slide, please. So I believe this is it. Yeah, there we go. Um, truck stop, an establishment that is engaged primarily in the fueling servicing. And repair and parking of tractor, trailer, trucks and similar freight vehicles with ancillary services that may include a restaurant. Shower facilities and or sleeping quarters. Um, if my recommendate as staff, we are recommending that you add this definition. Uh, should you choose to make this amendment to the development code and it will require a motion. From, uh, city council, a motion, a second, um, and a vote to modify. What has been proposed to add this to the definition section and the section is section ten one C. We all have a copy of this in front of you.
Quick, if I may, two quick notes. One, Councilmember Cargill has joined us as of just a couple minutes ago. So we want to note that for the record. And Lisa, I've got a question about the wording on this.
Sure.
And I may, I may just be too picky because I love my red pen. Um, so. An establishment that is engaged primarily in the fueling, servicing, repair and parking of tractor trailers. So I guess. Reading this to me, it, a truck stop needs to include all of this. So I'm wondering if that should be an or. But again, I may be reading too much into it.
Um, so you don't want to, it, you don't want to limit it to an or in the, in that portion of it. Specifically because you don't want to limit truck servicing. It's, that's not a truck stop. It's, it really is the combination of those things. It's where they have the ability for truckers to take a break. To, to get some sleep, to get some food.
Well, I guess, I guess my concern is, so if I look at the Maverick over at, um, uh, just by Walmart State Line. To me, I would consider that a truck stop, even though there's not like, yeah, because even though I don't believe there's repair there. But you know, one of their main things is refueling trucks and they can stay there, but there's no repair.
That would be a truck stop because it, that, that would be a truck stop and there may be some repair there, you know, whatever, but.
Yeah, I just didn't want to get too specific so that somebody says, whoa, well, we don't do repair, so we're not a truck.
I, I guess you could do an and or in there, but, uh, but again, I want to, I want to be explicit that we don't want to. We have a category for trucks, truck and, uh, servicing automobile and truck servicing. So it's as, as a standalone. So this is kind of, this is a different thing, but I think and or probably works there. So that's, that you certainly could make that. Uh, amendment. Um, next slide, please.
And here, I was just thinking you're going for the Oxford comma.
And actually, I think I add.
That's, that's my other thing.
I actually added the Oxford comma in the one that is in front of you. I missed it.
That's usually another pet peeve of mine. Okay. Thank you.
Also, the planning commission has recommended that, um, in these specific zones that we also amend the. Limited use standards for the gas station, convenience store, um, so that the convenience gas. The convenience stores, gas stations shall not exceed the twelve pumps. Again, so an existing business, uh, um. Or, or a new, uh, convenience store would have the same ability to have the same number of pumps. Um, I want to point out the five thousand, as I noted earlier, the five thousand square foot limit. Is in C one and C two in River District. It is eight thousand square feet. So that's what, where that came, that question came up. It wasn't a typo. It was only in the River District that it is that. So, um, next slide, please. Um, again, we've met all of our procedural requirements with respect to this. Next slide, please. Um, and again, there's a number of, uh, relevant comp plan goals and policies. I highlighted a couple that I think are particular drivers. Plan for future growth of the city in a cost effective manner while maintaining high. Quality public facilities and services. Maintain a healthy and sustainable local economy. Next slide, please. Um, economic development policy number four, continue to support the startup retention, expansion and recruitment of business. And economic development policy number five, provide consistent, fair, timely regulations that are flexible, responsible and effective. Now, one of the things that I, I do want to, I, I do want, when, when we started looking at this, we did look at other communities. And found that a number of the surrounding communities do allow for up to the twelve pumps. We also have heard from some providers that the difference is with twelve versus eight pumps. It doesn't necessarily drive more traffic. What it does is it reduces queuing and idling. And so that's, that's the thought process behind this. Uh, next slide, please. So again, the planning commission recommended the following findings that the required SEPA reviews have been completed on the proposed amendments. All public agency notice requirements were met and accomplished in a timely manner and I can testify to those facts myself. The public was provided the opportunity for early and continuous participation, as was demonstrated by the number of workshops we had on this topic. And of course, the public hearing before planning commission and now city council. And the public had the opportunity to submit written comments and testified at a public hearing before the planning commission, which they did. Um, like, next slide, please. So again, um, uh, the, the planning commission deliberated using the, um. The, um, uh, standards for approval for an amendment. And found that the proposed amendment is consistent with the comp plan and is not detrimental to public health. The proposed amendment is warranted by a change in economic tech, technological and or land use conditions. The proposed, proposed amendment is not necessary to correct an error. It's not necessary to clarify meaning or intent. It is necessary to provide for a proposed use that was not previously addressed and it is deemed necessary as being in the public interest. Um, planning commission, next slide, please, voted unanimously to, uh, recommend approval for this. Um, to you, city council, and I want, again, I want to underscore the fact that this is not about a use. It's about a code amendment that could apply to multiple uses. And so, um, and, um, again, as, as. Commissioner Salberg had so eloquently stated earlier. Uh, with that, I'd stand for questions.
And, and I can't see Councilmember, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Cargill. So Mayor Pro Tim, if you have a question, go ahead and jump in. I don't see any questions here in chambers. Oh, okay. Councilmember Evol and Councilmember Spencer.
Okay. I just, um, Lisa, I just want to clarify when you say twelve pumps.
Linda, can you get closer to your mic, please?
When you say twelve pumps, it's actually twenty-four, right? Because they're double sided. Is that correct?
That is correct. And eight pumps is actually sixteen because they're double sided. So yes, that is correct.
Okay. That's it.
But that's consistent with, as I said, what a number of other surrounding jurisdictions do allow.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Spencer.
Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, one, one question that, that I thought of as we, we were looking at the presentation. Because the, the word gas station and gas, uh, and, and then fueling, uh, how is this going to affect any sort of. Changes from gas to electric? Will that have to be addressed later?
I don't believe that it will. So, uh, building code and Washington state law are, uh, doing a, a handy job of addressing. Electric vehicle charging on their own.
Sure. Okay.
And so it's with every development proposal, um, now that comes in, there are requirements related to the electric vehicle charging. So I think that, um, uh, again, uh, that. Uh, Tesla, as an example, when they come, came in, that was part of their proposal. There was nothing in our. Development code that either. At that time, either required or prohibited that. So it was just, it was reviewed like anything else.
Perfect.
Anybody else here? Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
Why twelve? And why not fourteen? But why twelve?
So again, that was, that was a request that we had heard and this was not the first time we had heard it. When we, when we checked with what other surrounding jurisdictions were doing and we had, we took pictures of. Gas stations around the area that had that many. We found that it was actually a relatively common, uh, configuration. And typical more of the newer rather than the older, uh, developments.
Okay. Uh, with this change, I, I'm, I'm very supportive of this change. Um, I, I believe that it's, it's good to be aggressive in, on economic development. I really do. I think it's great that any business go out and try to get more businesses to come here. I'm a little disappointed that. In my opinion, there was not a lot of more transparency with this. We have not had a company. Uh, file a permit or anything, or even inquiries, understand. Uh, there's always this hush, hush of who it's going to be. It's probably going to be them. It's probably not going to be them. Whatever the case may be. Uh, I would have been more comfortable if this would have been addressed as. We're looking at making this change because this will enhance the city, be able to entice a large business to come to. Every lake. So transparency thing is a little important for me.
Well, it's always been billed as a city's, city sponsored change.
It has always been billed as a city sponsored change and we certainly talked about examples of types of uses. That do this a lot in planning commission workshops. And, um, again, um. I have an ethical obligation in my role that until I have a formal application.
Right.
For something, I can't disclose who I am talking to that's kicking the tires. And there's a really good reason for that. Because, um, if, if I'm talking about potential things that are happening. It can actually really negatively impact real estate transactions, um, negatively or positively. But it creates fitting wars and games and whatnot. And people should be free to come to the city. To kick the tires on what our regulations will and won't allow. And that's, that is one of the. Best economic development tools that we have. Um, so, so I, I'm. Again, I was following my own ethical obligations.
Well, I don't doubt that at all. I'm very supportive because you know, you're professional in what you do. But once again, you know. You're under obligation not to say anything if somebody's talking to you and I respect that because that's not information that's ever been disseminated to council members. And I continue to support that. It's different when suddenly at farmer's market, we're told this is who's coming to town. And I just feel once again, it's, it's for economic development, let's be upfront. Let's be aggressive. That why we're doing these type of changes. Because without that particular company having an interest, this wouldn't have come forward at this point. Never would have come forward. Okay. Now, it's here. I think it's a good deal. I support it. But transparency is a big thing.
Councilmember Cargill's got his hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a quick question, Lisa. I apologize. I missed about half of your presentation. Um, in the, um. In the discussions that you have had, are there any other potential changes that they have? Um, they have recommended or have said maybe in passing, maybe it's not as big of a priority as this one. But anything else that they have touched on?
No, uh, they have not. And we haven't actually had even a formal, uh. Pre-application conference with them. We've had some, some discussions with. A, with an entity who basically is still nameless in terms of what's been said to me. Um, on traffic study scoping. And background traffic and, and information on other traffic studies that have been done. And that is. That, that is as far as it has gone, other than some very general, we've pointed them in the direction of the code. Had informal conversations, talking about what our code requirements are. And we do have some pretty significant limited use standards for any sort of a. Big box type of development, um, large retail is what we refer to it as. And, um, there are some pretty significant, significant standards. I believe when Home Depot came to the city, that was before my time, but they had to jump through a lot of those hoops. And there are hoops that will have to be jumped through, um, uh, on any development proposal. Right now, we don't even have a specific site. There, I, I know that they have looked at several sites, sites and they, they are looking in different locations. But again, I don't have a name. I don't, and I don't know that it's going forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And as an example, you know, there was a four hundred and ninety thousand square foot logistics center approved on the east side of town. I think we even got to building design, I think at some point, that, and next thing we knew, the plant was for sale and now we have an R D V dealership. And more and boat dealership.
That's exactly right. We had gone through SEPA. They had already, they had already worked through all of their mitigations. They had had, we had been in the plan review process when all of a sudden it just.
Went away. Yeah. Yeah. Councilmember Kurtz.
I think that's my hesitation and my worry with this is that we are, we are making a significant change. In some ways to a swath of our city that will allow for. A myriad of things and a myriad of other businesses, whether it's this particular business or some other, um, business such as the one that's been named. And it, and it could go poof. And then we have this thing that we did, that we changed. That does allow for other businesses that are similar in size and scope and have the same model. To then come to town, which may not be the same thing that people hoped it would be with this. So it just feels like this shadows and mirrors and. Uh, and I'm, so I'm, I'm hesitant to approve a change to something, um, when. There's, there's no guarantee that this is who it's going to be.
So I will say, and again, that's not the basis for making the change. I will say that, um. It's very common with most of the, the large grocery stores, when they come to town, they also have discounted gas available. This is true almost everywhere, but here in Liberty Lake. Um, we, uh, there, there are other types of uses. We've got, we've got some, we've got a, um. We have, um, a potential truck. And, uh, like tractor, trailer, um, truck, delivery truck kind of dealer. That, um, that has purchased property here that may well be looking to do something like that. I would expect that, that if we had a bus company. They, they would, we, we don't allow accessory fueling anywhere and it, in our code, it's just, it's conspicuous by its absence. And that's, and there's a lot of different operations that could use it that would not necessarily be. A large retail establishment. And it may not, and I, I have one other point to make on that, and that is that. Looking at the use, looking at the, the use, the accessory. You may even decide that you want to keep it at eight pumps, but, but allowing for the use. So, so there. Those are the types of modifications that you city council could make. Um. It's, it's really up to you. We just brought it forward because we wanted to. It's probably not a deal killer one way or the other anyhow. We've already been told that.
Yeah. And then that, that's the thing too. Like if it's not a deal breaker, um, then do we need to do it? I mean, I, I also think about the, um, less expensive gas. It's three miles over, right? And I know.
Right. And that's, and that's, and I understand all of that. And at, at the end of the day. We were approached because we didn't, there, our code was silent on this type of use. That is ubiquitous in other communities, um, but we don't have it here.
Councilmember Spencer.
Uh, I'll just echo, uh, what Lisa said about that. We, we don't have any, any use or we don't have, have that in our code yet. Regarding accessory fueling stations. And, and again, to touch on the, the fact that we do have. regarding accessory fueling stations. And, and again, to touch on the, the fact that we do have grocery stores that don't have the ability to do that if they wanted to. I'm very pro-business and giving those businesses the edge they need to stay competitive and obviously talking about whether there's fuel cheaper across the border or not. I, I'd like people to stay here, and there's other things we can talk about to address that. But I, I'm, I'm very pro-business and, and giving them the ability to compete.
It looks like, uh, Mayor Pro Tim's got his hand up.
Well, I was just going to echo, um, what, uh, Councilmember Spencer had to say. I think, I think this is a, uh, an opportunity. Whether, whether it is who we think it might be, or whether it's not, uh, in the future, it, this is an opportunity for us to, this is an opportunity for us to improve the business climate in our city. And I, and I don't think we should shy away from that just because we don't know for a fact who it may be, or who it might be in the future, or who it might be next week. If, if we're hearing that this is a, a way to help improve the business climate and attract new businesses to the city, I think it's something that we should do. Thank you.
Thank you.
We should open this up for public comment. We didn't have anybody signed up here in the chambers, but, um.
All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at 8:51. We have to wait the full 60 seconds probably because it just flipped over. Um, is there anybody here in chambers or online who would like to make a public comment on this topic only? Let's see what, which, uh, which changes first, my phone or my computer to the next minute?
While we wait, we did receive a written public comment, um, in support of this, uh, proposed amendment from Jared Von Tobel.
Right. Thank you very much. Okay, cool. Nobody, nobody in chambers, nobody online? All right. So I guess, can we close it at the same time?
You can close it and open it up for deliberations.
Okay, we can go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh, let's call it 8:52. And we'll open it up for council deliberations. Councilmember Dunn?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to amend this development code amendment to include the truck stop definition as recommended by staff, uh, pending the word and slash or, uh, as discussed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Make a note of that. All right. Any discussion on the, on the requested change? Not hearing any, so go ahead and take a vote on, um, all of those in favor of just the amendment, right? Yeah, of amending the proposal to include the definition of truck stop with the change to the and/or, um, as discussed, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, looks like motion passes six zero, um, with Mayor Pro Tim online. All right. So do we have then a motion for, go ahead, Councilmember?
Madam Mayor, I, I move that the amended development code amendment be, um, approved, uh, as amended.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, then by Councilmember Kennedy. Any further discussion? Not seeing any. Okay, um, those in favor of approving the amended proposal, um, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, looks like, um, motion passes five to one with Councilmember Kurtz dissenting. All right. So I guess we will see that, um, ordinance come back at the next meeting?
Yes, we will.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for your patience, everybody. Um, moving along, we're getting to the end here. Um, we have no resolutions to review. Uh, we do have a, a second read of ordinance 188B, and I will turn it over to Kelsey.
Ordinance number 188B, an ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, amending the utility tax rate to provide revenue for city services and capital requirements and establishing an effective date.
And just as a reminder, this would be finally, um, reducing our utility tax to zero. And we had that discussion during the first read. So is there any further disc, I guess we, uh, need a motion for discussion? No? Okay, do we have any discussion on, on second read before we go to public comment? Not hearing any. Oh, Councilmember, Mayor Kurtz, I see your hand.
Just real, uh, real quick, Mayor, uh, for Kyle, I, I asked you this in the last meeting, and I just want to be sure. The effective date of this is September 1st, uh, so you've got essentially 11 days to get this done. I assume that's enough time?
Yeah, so I have a email queued up to all of our utility providers, and so I'm going to, uh, assuming this passes, I have a, I have a ready to put send online.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? All right.
Question?
Yes.
Uh, I might, I might have missed this, that when we were talking about this, didn't, didn't we talk about including this to eliminate that tax completely?
Yeah, this takes it to zero. Yeah.
Not, not eliminate, it was just to reduce it to zero.
But to get rid of the ordinance completely.
No, it doesn't get rid of the ordinance. So it still leaves the tool out there.
Only deal with a zero. Very good. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, um, any other comments from council? If not, I will go ahead and see once more, since we take public comment on our ordinances and resolutions. Is there anybody in chambers or online who'd like to comment on this second read ordinance 188B, reducing utility tax to 0%? Going once, going twice. Kelsey, do we have any, what do you wrote in? Uh, do we have anybody online who'd like to comment? All right, hearing none, uh, none. Do we have a motion to move, um, ordinance?
Uh, thank you. Move to, uh, approve, uh, ordinance number 188B.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second from Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tim Cargill. All right, if there's any further, no further discussion, go ahead and take a vote. So those in favor of approving ordinance 188B, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion passes six zero. All right, we're at, no, no emergency ordinances, upcoming agenda items. We've got your, your workshop, workshop worksheet in front of you. We did a little bit of work on this this morning during the agenda prep meeting. Um, so we've got, um, discussion on the dedicated funding source for art, uh, follow up on the third. Uh, we wanted to move that, move that forward in the discussion because it would, might affect, um, budget preparations.
And Mayor, as you heard Laura brief earlier, they're, they're going to propose a, a pilot version of this, so we need to have this conversation.
Yes, exactly. Um, on the 17th, we have got, um, we'll have the budget, library project budget presentation and discussion, comp plan, um, public engagement plan from Lisa, and then we move into October. Uh, there are some other ones we still have in here. We're working really hard, um, on getting these things moved up. I did have a couple, quick notes, um, under city council rules of procedure. Obviously, we didn't have our workshop tonight because I did not receive any red lines from anybody, so I'd like to open that up. Here, if you have any red lines for the rules of procedure, uh, Kelsey did provide that word document, so if you can get that back to, um, both of us by the end of next week, that would give us some time to go through it and consult Sean on anything that we can, we can try to find another time to get that back on the, the agenda. Um, but I would obviously, um, the presentation linked discussion, I think, would fall under that rules of procedure, um, as well. On the active shooter tutorial from PD, we are planning, uh, we're trying to get together and plan some small group training, so we don't, so it's not a noticed meeting because obviously we don't want, necessarily want everybody to know what our plans are. So we will be, you will be seeing some, um, options coming forward on times to get together for that. Library space, um, uh, Councilmember Kennedy, that's, you know, probably falls in with part of the facilities master plan. So I'd like to, you know, see if it's okay if we kind of just hold off on that and, and have that discussion with that plan. And we've got the town hall coming up. And, um, Mayor Pro Tim, you, you had had on here, um, the commission appointment process. It's been a while, and I know you had a note for, uh, asked for staff support. I know Mark and I were looking for a little bit more clarity on that. Our, our, our memories have gotten a little fuzzy on the request.
Let, um, let me figure out what that request was, and I'll email you back if that.
I know, I know there was, was, some of the discussion around that was, um, uh, you make, yeah, and we've made some of the improvements, you know, we, we've had, you know, now we've had the, uh, the candidates either be online or here at the meetings. So if anybody wants to ask any questions, but it seems like most of the time there's no questions. So, yeah, if you want to get back to us on that, that'd be great. Okay, so is there any, any workshops or topics that anybody would like to add for future? Councilmember Vol?
Town square master plan, it might be on there sometime.
That kind of falls, that calls, falls in with the facilities master plan. Yeah, so it all kind of rolls together. Um, anybody else? Councilmember Kurtz?
Kind of a question because we're talking about the, um, September 10th town hall. What's our expectation for us being there and what we'll be doing? I saw the agenda, but, um, just so we're prepared.
So, excuse me, if you look at the agenda, and it's draft only in the sense that we wanted to, you know, have opportunity to have any, uh, feedback incorporated into it. For the first segment, the six, six to seven PM hour, th- this is, and you heard Summer brief this earlier. This is set up more like an open house. So you've got a table for, uh, four of our major commissions, uh, for a couple of representatives each to kind of answer questions from community members. And then the same expectation would be for council to kind of be, uh, mingling and meeting and greeting for that hour in, individually. Um, and then when we go to the, uh, through the transition to the town hall portion, mayor and council will be assembled in kind of a seated area for a moderated discussion that includes the proposals that we've, uh, discussed at, at least a couple of times during council, plus the public comment during public meetings topic, um, which would give the audience um, an opportunity to ask some Q and A, but it's a moderated discussion on those specific topics, sort of in a panel discussion format.
All right, um, I think, I think, uh, Mayor Pro Tim has his hand up, and then we'll go to Councilmember Kennedy.
Uh, two questions. Uh, one has to do with the town hall. Mark, I'm wondering if you've had any thoughts or concerns about the fact that the presidential debate is on that night now?
Yeah, we talked about that earlier.
Comment was made earlier, and I, you know, we, um, I don't know when that was scheduled, but it was after this was scheduled. And so we've, we've locked multiple pieces of this in and paid fees. And so I would not at this point recommend changing the date of the town hall.
I think those people should have contacted us.
No kidding. And there's always the DVR button.
I think it's terribly rude.
Do we have any indication as to RSVPs? Do we ask people to RSVP? Or is it just open?
We have not asked people to RSVP. It's, it's open, but, uh, I, I can tell you that, um, the Community Engagement Commission is using one of their budgeted four mailings, uh, to promote this event. So the invitation is going out to 4,600 residential addresses.
Okay, uh, thank you. A second question or second request is that we, on the September 17th meeting, we had the discussion about, uh, initiatives 2117 and 2066.
So they position on initiatives. Okay. All right, we will do our best to get that in there. I think both workshops are going to be pretty hefty. We'll see what we can do. Okay, uh, Councilmember Kennedy?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, looking at the town hall discussion, seven, 10 to eight, that allows 50 minutes. I would hope that we would, uh, open it up to possibly more. Uh, we're going to spend some time on transfer to act proposals with public comment. I'm hoping to encourage public comment, a great amount, because I think that's what we need to hear.
But it's a notice meeting. I guess somebody could always, uh, motion to extend. Would that be a possibility, Sean?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, this.
So it's a special meeting?
I mean, you're not noticing it's a special meeting, are you?
We are, we are noticing it as a special meeting.
Okay, so, um, from that perspective, if you want to have more time, you should probably note it as more time before you started, just to be, you know, so you don't have an issue.
Sure.
So when, when it goes out, what, 24, 48 hours in advance? Won't necessarily be on the mailer, but.
Right.
Okay.
Good.
Right, all right, anybody else on future topics? All right, not hearing, oh, go ahead.
On this open house, so if it's, if this first part is social, will there be like cookies or something for people?
Yeah, there, there's, there's food.
Okay, I mean, you know, it'd just be a nice thing to do.
Yeah. Okay, yes.
Uh, so, uh, again, on this position on initiatives, um, what, I, I'm curious what the timeframe is for it to, you know, become effective for, for us taking that position if we decided to do so. What is the timeliness? And, and maybe Mayor Pro Tim Cargill can, can address this.
Well, I think it would be part, it would be in a resolution, I believe, right, Sean?
Yes.
And, and resolution affected, I mean, it pretty much affected the same.
Same day.
Same day. So, um, I know primary ballots come out, or next ballots come out in mid-October, early mid-October. Mayor Pro Tim, you want to add anything to that timeline?
No, I was going to say the exact same thing.
Great. Uh, Councilmember Kurtz?
Uh, my question is, I thought we were going to discuss whether we were going to do this or not, not just bring it.
Yeah, I think that would be the first part of the discussion, would be my expectation.
Okay. So this would be just an introductory, do we even want to go forward with the, making positions?
I, I was, I, I think that would, go ahead, Mayor Pro Tim.
I, that's exactly what I was going to say, is that, uh, September 17th gives us time to decide if we want to take a position. And then if we do, we could take the position, the first meeting in October. In which case, everyone who's sitting on the edge of their seat, uh, asking what our position is going to be, can decide if they're going to follow that position in October.
Thank you. Great. Okay, Councilmember Vol?
Um, and if we were to take a position, would it be required that it be a unanimous vote?
That's, that, that would be part of that discussion. So again, we're just, we're just getting our topics set. We're not getting into the discussion here. So that's something we'll have the answer to. Okay, um, nobody else has anything else on future agenda items? We are back to citizen comments. Thank you, everybody, for sticking around and sticking with us. So once again, for how, I've lost track of how many times now, but if you'd like to make a public comment, now is your last chance before we adjourn. Uh, do we have anybody online? Okay, do we have anybody in council chambers? If you'd like, just go ahead and, we've got your sheet. Go ahead and come up to the mic. Reintroduce yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Lisa Willexen from the Bella Laga community. I guess one of the things, I guess, we would, I'd be curious about is how are we kept informed of when you are having meetings or discussions with the, um, developer? I mean, because I mean, we've brought up some concerns, but we didn't even know the land was being sold and, you know, I mean, so how do we know when they're bringing these proposals up to you guys? So you don't end up with us sitting here every other Tuesday night when we're teachers and I've got papers to grade.
So, so, so typically, we don't, don't do the back and forth, but I see Lisa behind you looking to possibly respond to that. So we will, uh, we will, we will bend the rules. And, and my, and my question was going to be, to Lisa, when we get together tomorrow, also, maybe a, a, um, maybe we can talk, go to a HOA meeting too, maybe at some point.
We absolutely can. And so this is what I want to say. It won't actually come to city council. Th- this is a quasi judicial matter. They, um, will be submitting a preliminary plat. You all, uh, being within 400 feet of, uh, of the property, will be noticed on that. You'll have opportunities to comment on the CEPA, as well as coming to a public hearing on the proposed subdivision. So there is a lot of opportunity for you to comment and get engaged, and you will be noticed on it.
Right, thanks, Lisa. All right, so if there are no other public comments, um, next we have adjournment. So we are adjourned. See everybody at the next meeting. Again, thanks to you guys for coming. We always love the public input. Thanks.